Good evening. Good, check, check, one, two. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Placerville Planning Commission for Tuesday, August 15th. If you, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Thank you. Can we have the roll call, please?
Present.
Chair Fran?
Here.
Vice Chair Keeney?
Here.
Commissioner Lepa?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Okay, well, we have everybody here. Are the bylaws on the agenda? Oh, okay. Closed session, we have none. Item number four, adoption of the agenda. Anyone have any changes or corrections to the agenda they wish to introduce?
Chair Fran, I was going to request that we move item number nine to later on our agenda so that we can conclude or do the public hearing. And anyone who's here for that, we can take care of that business and then have the presentation after that.
So, there's a motion to do that in a second. The chair is not opposed. Just to note that typically, we would have our presentations in the order as presented on the agenda. Is there a particular reason you'd like to move this one to the end?
I just wanted to make sure that our, anyone present for that public hearing, we didn't delay them, so I just wanted to move that up.
All right. And then we can discuss that again also under matters of Commissioner and staff. But there is a motion duly made and seconded on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposition? All right. So, we will reorder the agenda so that item nine point-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. Chair Fran, who seconded that motion?
I believe that Commissioner Smith did, actually. So, we will take up item 9.1. Commissioner Keeney, your motion was not specific as to whether it should come after item 12 or after item 13. I'm presuming it's after item 12. After new business in advance of matters from Commissioners and Staff?
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Okay, fair enough. So, with that understanding, without requiring an introduction of amendments, and therefore, we will take up item 9.1 after the presently numbered item 12. Okay, so, we have a motion on that. Consent calendar. The item we have in consent calendar is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 18. Any, I have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Chair Fran, staff would like to have that item polled for discussion of-
Oh, fair enough, yes. And I probably should have asked if anyone wants to pull the item.
We typically don't, but we do have one issue on the case.
All right, so, staff is going to pull that item.
Pull, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
We're going to pull 5.1, the minutes.
Yeah.
Pull the minutes, okay.
We're going to pull them, and then that'll bring us down to item six. So, as there are no other additional items that are item five, that concludes item five. Do we need a motion to pull them? No, that's automatic. If it's requested to pull, they're automatically pulled. Okay, item six, items pulled from the consent calendar at the request of staff?
Yes, so, staff is pulling it specifically for item 10.2, which had to do with Apple Farm Place. We had a question regarding condition number five on page six has to do with landscaping. During the discussion, I believe Commissioner Keeney mentioned it could be approved at the staff level. The motion did not include a change to the requirement for it to come back to commission for approval. This would be the landscaping plan, and so, we just wanted to clarify if that was the intent of your motion, or if you'd like to amend that condition.
I apologize. I am having trouble hearing you. Let me adjust my hearing. How embarrassing.
And if I could make a request back to our sound engineer, if they could bump the volume, and I don't know if it's the new microphones or-
I'm having trouble with both of you. I apologize.
Well, I can't even hear myself speak.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all right. I mean, check, check, one, two.
Could you just repeat?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
So, for item-
That's better.
-10.2, condition of approval number five on page six, it has language regarding approval of the landscaping plan to come back to planning commission. During Commissioner discussion at the last meeting, there was mention of having it at the staff level. So, staff would just like some clarification from the Commissioners if that was the intent of the motion.
This is on the Apple. Well, right, no-
That is the way-
But the item, the item is the Apple Farm Place, which is the Upper Broadway Large Shopping Center.
Correct.
I did, yeah, I did review the, my notes from the, that public hearing, and that's what my notes said, that it would be for staff approval.
Oh, so, you've had a conversation with staff?
No, no, I reviewed my notes from the meeting prior to-
Oh, in comparison with the minutes?
Happened to notice that.
Excellent.
So, um-
I was going to do that, too, but I, it missed me.
It actually, I don't know if it's as accurate, but it's quicker than watching the video again.
But you did say, you did, but your notes comport with the minutes as reflected?
That, to add the clarification, that that would be, that landscaping plan, number five, would be at the staff level.
Oh, and not by planning commission?
Right, because it was essentially voluntary. They're going to go ahead and install things, was our understanding, and so-
It wasn't within our purview, anyway.
Right, so, this was-
Oh, right, right, now, okay.
And so, they, they are going to, they will have to submit as built plans, so-
That, that, okay.
So, that's, that's the way I, my notes-
That's my recollection as well.
So, I did watch the video just to make sure that this reflected the, the motion that Commissioner Lepa made. And I believe on item number five, it was predominantly to address the shade calculations, not necessarily the landscape. And it does say that the revised landscape is subject to the subsequent site plan review, and so, that would, we wouldn't actually make a determination of whether that was staff level or come to us. It would, on that subsequent approval for that later site plan review, it would just be included in that as it would normally be.
Except that the landscaping is voluntary.
But not for this future.
In the future.
This is addressing the future construction.
Okay, so, this is not addressing what's proposed in the greater parking lot?
Not the way I read it.
There's two, I think if you bifurcate it, there's two elements to the landscaping plan. There's landscaping which might be required specific to the eastern portion, right, with a, with a second application. But in addition, the applicant, now it's coming back to me, the applicant was also voluntarily proposing some significant landscaping in the main parking lot that exists now. So, I need to ask staff the question, if I may. This item number, is it item five? Item five on page six, technically, right? Is items, is it item six or item five we're talking about?
Item five.
Item five. Is this item five dealing, this is dealing with the fast food restaurant side, right? Not dealing with the main parking lot? That's not item six, because item six is-
Can, can, can staff respond?
Yeah, please help me out with this, because there's two parts.
First, I want to say exactly why staff pulled the minutes. We just want to make sure that staff correctly described condition number five that was the intent of the commission, because what happened is, up until Commissioner Keeney made the final motion, there was a lot of discussion, and it seemed to be agreement amongst the Commissioners that the final landscaping plan would be provided for review and approval by staff.
Right.
But when we listened to the video, it wasn't in the motion. So, we automatically wrote it then, well, then it goes to the planning commission, because typically, the landscaping plan is approved by the planning commission.
Right.
The commission has in the past requested it comes back to them. It's, it's your prerogative. But also, many times in the past, commission has felt that they had provided staff enough direction that staff, that the applicant can move forward with the final landscaping plan for review and approval by staff. So, moving to the more complicated item is, we have a parking lot that's existing, and so, the applicant was not required to really do any landscaping at all. And you're correct, landscaping will be required-
That's the voluntary aspect.
Should a fast food restaurant or some other use be installed in that pad, there will be some minimum landscaping then that would, that we would require. But other than that, it is voluntary, and so, we want to support what the applicant's doing. And it's very, very limited. It's limited to our water conservation ordinance and those kinds of things and a percentage of native plants.
Right, so, actually-
Yeah.
And as I process this a little bit more, item six-
It should be included as well.
Deals specifically with the voluntary landscaping that was offered for the larger parking lot, right? That's correct.
It should be five and six, apologies.
So, that, so, item six needs to be revised to approve by staff, correct? Item five really shouldn't even be here. It's immaterial until such time as they submit an application. At the time of the application, that's automatically going to trigger a landscaping plan. And this really is bringing back some of the confusion, I think, that we wrestled through that over this item, because we had, well, here's a project that's before you now, and then there's a possibility of this coming later, and really, until that possibility later happened, there was really no point in really discussing any of those specifics, correct?
It occurs to me, maybe we should strike the final phrase, "and the future fast food restaurant" from five, and just have it stop at 1484, 1498 Broadway, because that's what we were talking about. We're not talking about any, anything else, the future fast food restaurant. Yeah, when, if and when that becomes a reality, they will be coming back to the planning commission.
I agree with that point, but then, this item number five needs to comport with whatever the agenda item was that was presented to us, because my guess is that item number five wasn't just created out of thin air. This was actually in the agenda, this was in the terms of conditions-
Yes.
-at the time, so, we, I don't know that we can change that, because we didn't take action to change it. It just, it just seems that item, this item five shouldn't even be here, because this is related to something that might come-
Chair Fran, if staff could comment on that. We, staff would prefer that this condition of approval remain, because somebody can't just then install landscaping without entering into a landscape maintenance agreement, and that's something that we would also require. That maintenance agreement will include, as an exhibit to that maintenance agreement, the staff-approved landscaping plan. So, it needs to be in here.
Isn't that, is that not covered by seven? That they're entering into a landscape maintenance agreement?
Right, but we do want the applicant to submit a revised landscaping plan for staff approval. I think that staff feels that condition number five is a condition-
For which?
I think six and seven. I kind of agree in following your thought process in, in that the top one really refers to a potential future application, number five. But I think six and seven covers what you've discussed, which that's, that they do need to submit a final landscape plan and the irrigation plan, following approval of a revised landscaping by staff, because in the report, we did recommend a couple of changes, didn't we not, to some of the plants they'd picked? So, it would be revised, no matter what, because they said, I think, if I remember, it's the same application.
Right. Staff would just caution, that what's before you is just a clarification of, of the condition as was the intent of the commission, not to go back and revisit, delete conditions, add conditions, or change conditions. We just want to make sure that we're conforming to the action taken by the commission. This isn't like a reopening of this item.
So, on that point, then, my recollection is of the action taken on the commission with regards to landscape was that it was only relevant to the landscaping that might be required, not volunteered, but required as part of what we approved, not something subsequent.
Right.
So, that's the, that's real, at the end of the day, that's the clarification. And that landscaping, we are comfortable with that being handled administratively with staff. Is that correct? Is that my, is that, we in agreement on that? So, we're not dealing with any landscaping for a potential future application.
Right.
It's whatever landscaping is required as part of the requested application for the remodel, right?
Right.
Okay? And that doesn't include the voluntarily offered landscaping, with the exception of the water-saving code. That has to apply regardless. But the, as far as the street, there's probably some landscaping along the frontage of Broadway, I'm assuming. That's what's at issue here, and that's what we were comfortable allowing staff to deal with administratively. Is that right?
So, to then put this to the conditions, we do need to clarify for just number six, that strike by planning commission and-
Correct. That needs to be administratively by staff.
And my confusion in number five, I had suggested we delete the wording about the future fast food restaurant, but, you know, as I recall, that's the way the project was described to us. It's always this future fast food.
Well, I think that should, that should remain, because that's how it was presented to us.
Because that's part of their project description, yes. And it was- In the event that they do that, it'll come, that comes back to us. Okay.
Okay.
And it was also noted in the staff report, which, you know, was entered in the public record, so I think we should definitely keep that in there, just because, you know, that was part of the staff report, that future fast food restaurant. So, I'd be comfortable with leaving five as it is, and then changing planning commission to staff on item number six. Does that address staff's concerns regarding this item?
Great.
Yes, it does.
Perfect.
Any additional comments by Commissioner?
I had one minor change on number 15.
Page?
Page seven. The right-of-way line shall be included in the revised site plan to, I had wanted to read accurately show, as opposed to reflect the city right-of-way. We had a long discussion and, about that, and at the time, I, I thought I had gotten that included in the conditions, but not simply reflect. And I realize that may be a standard term of art, but given our discussion, the fact that there is some confusion, I thought it was important that we use the wording accurately show.
What about accurately reflect?
To accurately reflect.
We can retain the term of art and add the finesse that I think is what you're trying to get to.
And staff, I, yeah, I realize that that's to reflect, that's pretty standard language. Is there any problem with inserting the word accurately reflect?
We can go either way. I mean, it doesn't really change anything.
Okay, I just, at-
I think it's inherent to be accurate.
For this particular situation, I thought it was important to-
We definitely don't want inaccurate.
From staff's perspective, they dare not inaccurately reflect it, right?
That's right, and these will be reviewed up against the engineering department's improvement plans that we have on file.
All right, so, we'll change it to accurately reflect. Any other discussion by Commissioners? Anyone in the audience have any comments on the minutes that were pulled? Seeing none, I'll request all in favor on this item?
Aye.
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 Aye? Opposition? Commissioner Smith, you need to say aye with a microphone on.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, very good. So, that was a long-winded discussion on something of importance. Item six is covered.
I'm sorry, Chair Fran, who first and who seconded the motion to approve the minutes?
I believe Commissioner-
We have changes.
Oh, you know, we, ah, boy. I didn't, I didn't take a formal motion on that. I called an all-in-favor. I didn't do a, yeah, did I do a formal motion on that? I just called an all-in-favor. It's a minor, minor procedural matter. We can have a formal motion, if you like.
I think so.
All right. Chair one-
I'll move to.
Chair Carter moves.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Keeney.
As amended, yeah.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposition? None seen. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Item seven, items of interest to the public, non-agenda items. Item seven is reserved for the members of the public to address the commission on any item that was within the commission's purview that is not on tonight's agenda. Please be advised that the commission is not able to take action on any information that's brought before us, and comments should be delivered respectfully and not ad hominem or otherwise critical of individuals, public, or city staff. You will be limited to a term of three minutes. Anyone in the audience wish to address the commission? Seeing none, item seven is closed. Item eight, written communication, non-agenda items. I don't believe we've received any communications. Very good. Item nine, I'm sorry?
I just wanted to make a note of those coming in.
All right, I would-
To the fact that we're having the historic preservation joint workshop?
Yeah, I probably would have reserved that for under items of Commissioners and staff, but that's okay. We did, we do have some communication from staff about the joint historic preservation joint workshop, August 29, 2023, 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. here in Town Hall. Refreshments will not be served. Bring your own. Well, maybe they will be served, I don't know. Lemonade. Item 9.1 has been moved to after item 12, so then it'll bring us to item 10. Environmental assessments, this is a site plan review, historic review. Consideration of a site plan review application within the multifamily residential historic district to modify an existing single-family residence. Two, remove rotted stairs, decking, railing, and balusters as needed. Two, replace stairs, railing, and balusters with similar materials and style. And three, replace wood decking with composite decking. And four, find the project categorically exempt from CEQA. And Ms. Hunter, you have the staff report.
Thank you. The subject site plan review is a request from the applicant for approval of completed work, including removal of rotted stairs, decking, railing, and balustrade as needed, and replacement of these items with similar materials and style. The project includes modifications to the front and side decks of the Kembelik Blair House, a nationally-registered structure. The structure is a two-story elaborate Victorian home with a mix of Queen Anne, Stick, Eastlake, and Gothic architectural elements. Both decks, including a majority of railings and balustrade, were deteriorated beyond repair, making replacement or reconstruction a requirement. Key features of both the front and side deck are the spool-and-spindle balustrade and ornamental railings. Both of these elements were, if deteriorated beyond repair, were replaced with similar material and style. Of note, the wood decking was replaced with Trex material. It is the opinion of staff that the project is consistent with the purpose, intent, and criteria of zoning ordinance sections 10-4-9, site plan review, and 10-4-10, historical buildings in the city, as well as the general plan. Further, based on staff review, it, the project is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, guidelines, section 15301 and 15331, in that the project results in no expansion of the existing use, and that reconstruction is completed in a manner consistent with the Secretary of Interior standards for treatment of historic properties. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, adopt the findings in support of SPR 99-05-R, and conditionally approve the project based on the findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. This concludes staff's report on SPR 99-05-R.
Brief, concise, and to the point. Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Questions of staff by Commissioners? Commissioner Keeney? Commissioner Carter? Commissioner Smith?
Questions I had was about the kind of material that's used for the decking. It described composite material. Do you have any information about that? What kind of composite material?
It's Trex material. I think it's a, I-
I looked at the composite.
Yeah, I looked it up, and it's a combination of wood and plastics.
So, hold on, please. Did you have a question of staff?
I think my questions will be addressed when probably the applicant comes to the podium, so, thank you.
So, I'm going to ask a question, and I'll just say right off the bat that I'm generally predisposed to the application, but this is from my edification, and I think frankly, it's relevant to the special workshop we're going to have on the 29th. And this is not a criticism, it may sound like it, but my, I have portion of my home with Trex, and Trex is a great material. It's durable. It's fire-resistant, if not fireproof. How does it meet the Secretary of the Interior standards and guidelines as being even a similar material? How is it not like a vinyl window as opposed to a wood window?
I think the key factor is that the key historical features of this house are the decorative elements around the deck, not necessarily the deck itself.
But you can see the deck from the street?
Yes.
And it hasn't been one of our, again, pardon my tone, because it's not directed at you or Pierre. I mean, this is my frustration with trying to understand, you know, how we balance all of this, because, you know, the Secretary of Standards of Interiors apply, first of all, to the exterior of the facility, right, of anything. And while you may not be able to readily tell, driving by, that it's Trex and not wood, to me, that's not much different than vinyl versus the wood windows, when, when they're painted, you really can't tell the difference until you get right up there, right? So, that, that's, you're not up, this is not public discussion yet, sir, so you'll have your opportunity. This is between myself and staff, this is between the commission and staff. I haven't opened a public hearing yet. I will. Trust me. So, I, I'm challenged by that. The only thing I'm challenged with also is the use of redwood as opposed to what was more than likely, probably not redwood. And, and of course, if it's going to be painted, then you wouldn't know it's redwood as opposed to pine or cedar or whatever. But again, trying to be consistent with the spirit, if not the actual letter of the law, the SOI, then isn't redwood kind of a specific material? Certainly, if it uses redwood and treated as redwood, which is gorgeous and beautiful, and I love redwood, how would that meet the standards to which we're trying to hold ourselves accountable to? And I hope that question made sense.
No, it makes a lot of sense, and those are definitely good questions, and really, believe me, staff is really looking forward to the joint city council planning commission workshop on this topic.
This will be exhibit number two for that meeting.
I want to add that any, any item that's still in play, meaning the application is still before the commission or subject to appeal to the city council, we absolutely do not want to bring up that application. You can talk about similar situations, but I know in the past, it was mentioned that, oh, this will be a very specific item we want to bring up at the workshop.
There'll be hypotheticals.
Right, exactly.
We'll do hypotheticals.
Yes, yes. Thank you. But anyway, so, you know, again, staff is a little bit torn, because we, we were allowing composite windows that were partially wood and partially other materials, and so, staff then felt a little, we wanted to be, add a little more flexibility on the decking, because the decking, yeah, it's, it's visible, but barely visible from the street. It's mainly, as, as Ms. Hunter said, it's the, the architectural features surrounding the deck, and so, we didn't, we didn't see a concern with the, the floor of the deck, the decking itself, being a Trex composite as opposed to wood. Now, that certainly doesn't mean that the commission can disagree and require there to be a wood replacement of what was, of what was rotten and being removed, which was wood, and I can't remember, maybe Ms. Hunter can tell us, but I don't know what kind of wood it was, whether it was Douglas fir or redwood. And I don't know what kind of wood was used on the, you know, the balustrade or the other features around the deck, but you're correct. Typically, to meet Secretary Interior standards, if it's a redwood balustrade and you want to replace it with redwood, unless it was definitely not available, then you move to another type of wood, but you want to try and mimic or be exact as you can. So, I hope that answers your question.
It does, and you can understand, you can understand my frustration and concern, and again, as I mentioned, I'm already favorably predisposed to approve the project as submitted, but, you know, we haven't had a discussion or discussion with the public yet. But, but I can see someone else who's a little bit more, we use the term enthusiastic about these issues, saying, well- these issues, saying, well, redwood wasn't commonly used back when this home was constructed, this, this era, number one. Two, Trex clearly wasn't available, and, and even though you can only see a little bit, you know, you, you can still see it, so you're still approving something that's visible from the exterior. And this, this just gets to consistency and defensibility and all those things. That, that's really the main reasons I'm bringing it up. I'm not opposed to any of it, frankly, from, from my orientation, but I, I just wanted to, to make sure I pointed those, those out, and I don't know if my fellow commissioners have any comments on that. And I'm gonna go to Commissioner Ryan.
Yeah, if I may, I want to just agree with staff's position, differentiating the, the decking material from the windows. Windows are key architectural features and should be treated as such, just like the spool and spindle balusters, ornamental railings. Those are key architectural features and are being replaced with the same material. The decking, I, I did do a, a site visit, and the decking is not visible from the street. You're actually below, below grade, and you, you can't tell. And I just want to take the differentiating, the decking from a key, is not necessarily a key architectural feature of the home, and thus I think there is some wiggle room or...
I would urge caution, though, because I think vinyl windows are, are created, are manufactured such that unless you go up and really look, you, you can't tell. And it, and it's really is supposed to be kind of the casual observer from the street as to what drives, drives the standards.
Understood, but windows are a key defining architectural feature of this period of, of homes, and thus I think we should be treated differently than the decking material.
I think you missed my, you missed my point. My point was, there are vinyl windows that are reproduced that look identical to, right, the, the window that's coming out. That they're manufactured to look identical. You would have no way of knowing. That's my point.
And I, and I agree, but I, I don't think it's germane to this conversation, because I don't believe the decking material is a key architectural feature, thus I don't necessarily think the material for the decking, maybe I'm...
I think we're getting off topic, and I'm just going to ask that we reserve this discussion, because I think, I'd like to chime in on this, but let's hear from the public and the applicant.
I'm gonna go to Commissioner Smith, who has his microphone on.
I, I did have a question for staff, but go ahead.
And then I'll come back to you, Commissioner Keeney.
You could save me a lot of discussion if you stopped me now, because, one, I agree with Commissioner Carter. As I drove by, I can't see the decking, so that's one of the standards. We don't faithfully follow the Interior Secretary's guidelines that are mandatory when it comes to historic federal properties like Mount Vernon. When you, you don't see the deck from the street. The windows you can see from the street. The banisters, the dowelled wood, the changed craft wood, you can see, and what I could notice is they appear to be like what was replaced. When it comes to the kind of wood that's used, that's a very high standard that you would expect of Mount Vernon, and it's the kind of standard that was used for preserving the Herick Building. I'm not sure people know the lengths they went to, to restore that. They went around to lumber yards all over the state looking for wood of the same kind, of the same age, if it was dry, rotten to replace. The next thing I wanted to point out is that when we talk about vinyl windows, we're really talking about Title 42 of the state code that requires double-pane windows. Most manufacturer, most contractors say vinyl because there's a higher profit margin, they're mass-produced. At the later end of our report, what I was gonna let you know is we've discovered that there's another alternative to vinyl, and you can see it in action at the Thompson, Judge Thompson House. Those windows date back to 1850, they're right across from the property tonight. Those windows are hand-blown, they've got the bubbles in them. They are 42, Title 42 compliant. And I'll just pass it out to you, we'll discuss it later, but this is a company called Indo.
Commissioner Smith, I will ask you to hold this until later, and I will defer to Commissioner Keeney. You're absolutely right, that part of this discussion really needs to come back when we have questions, discussion amongst ourselves.
But I think we'll answer your questions, thank you.
All right.
I had a question for staff, let's just, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to take public comment before we do more deliberating. Has the city ever, or the county, to your knowledge, ever enrolled in the Mills Act, which is in regards to historic districts and national register, registered properties?
City has not.
And as far as you know, the county...
I'm not aware the county has either.
Because that affects tax rules, and so it is a way for an owner of a historic property to realize some, some benefit, economic benefit. So I just wanted to make sure I was clear on the record of this, as I recall, this house was listed with a historic register in 1985, right? Okay, so I didn't think we had, but I thank you for clarifying that.
Additional questions of staff by commissioners? All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I'll invite the applicant or their agent, if they'd like to address the commission. I'm sure we'll probably have some questions for you. I'm anticipating you already had some comments for us in advance. Are you Mr. Darnell?
I am.
Welcome.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, now that I've turned on your microphone.
All right.
Yep.
Appreciate your efforts.
Hey, well, thanks for having me, by golly. I haven't never been to a town hall meeting, by golly. So, well, let me, let me tell you the circumstances. That deck was probably built, well, we moved in about 20 years ago, and that deck has been repaired and, you know, put things in there to try to make sure that it's safe, so nobody falls through it. And so our plan was to bring in and upgrade the foundation of the deck, because it really, I mean, that side of the house takes a beating from the weather. It does. And the wood that we tried to put in there and tried to maintain and stuff like that was taking a beating. So we thought, well, we're finally gonna refix this deck, which wasn't cheap, and we thought, well, look at these materials nowadays. You know, you got composite roofing material on these historic houses, so why not bring that deck up to speed a little bit and, and do it that way? I tell you, the, the deck is gorgeous. If you guys want to come out and see it, you're more than welcome. Come on in, I tell you, I'll bring you out there any day of the week. It works for us, we're happy with the, the work that was done, it's very professional, and because we've lived in that house so long, you know, I don't know if any of you guys live in a old house, Queen Anne Victorian, built in 1895. Well, we do, and we've lived there for 20 years. There's a vibe that comes from that house, and we would never, never mess with the integrity of any part of what we can do to make sure, first of all, we're safe, and to upgrade things that are deteriorating. So that was our plan. I apologize, I didn't think I was gonna have to sit out here and stand in front of you guys and stuff like that. I thought, hey, I gotta fix my, I'm a homeowner. My house is falling apart. I gotta fix it. So, my bad. But still, really, if you come out and look at this Trex, this Trex, it's really, really nice. It's, it's gray, it's got grain in there, the colors are great, the dogs love it, the cat loves it, I love it. So it's really not, it didn't mess with the integrity of the house. And I know that when we first moved in there years ago, that because of the historical significance of it, we could not do anything. I don't know where this vinyl windows are coming from. I mean, we have, we have windows that, that wiggle, because they're so old. So, but anyway, I, I really, I would, I would invite you to come and see for yourself if you're having a problem with doing upgraded materials for an outside deck. It's a duck deck, it's a deck, and there's a couple stairs in the front. So, and you're right, you cannot see the deck from the street. And once we get to finally get through with this stuff, we'll paint the railing, we'll paint the, the balusters, and, oh my God, you guys, when you see it from the street, it's gonna be gorgeous. So, thank you for your time, consideration, and I appreciate it.
Questions of the applicant by commissioners?
Thank you for your passion.
Thanks.
For the house and for taking on the expense of restoring it. And I just wanted to make sure I understood, it was in your application, the National Historic Register submission for the house, right? So you knew full well that you have a house that's listed on the National Historic Register?
Only, only the main property, only the house. We were never told that, first of all, we were never told we were in a historic district.
Uh-huh.
We didn't know there was rules and regulations.
But you, your house is on the National Historic Register, and it's your intent to, to keep it on the register. You don't have a, you're not considering withdrawing it from the registered?
No, 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 no.
I mean, that, that's a possibility, it takes...
No.
Not an act of Congress, but, you know, you, you would have to, you know, proactively withdraw it. But that's not, your intention is to maintain it and restore it, keep it?
The house is, the house is really a work of art.
Okay.
And it's, and it's not going anywhere, I'm telling you.
Okay.
That thing is solid as a rock.
And another question I had was your selection of the color gray. I got a little confused in Attachment 3, there's two pictures, one where it appears to be brown, and then another picture where it looks gray, and I've got to argue back with all of you, I drove by, I could see it, it's gray, I knew it was gray, but why did you choose gray? Was that, was it gray when you moved in? Do you have photos of it at one time, and so, or is that just your preference, because it goes with the rest of the color scheme?
I'm really not sure.
Okay.
It was just, you know, it's one of those things where we saw the material, and you know how you go, that's perfect.
Yeah, most of the Trex that I've seen is a gray tone, I think, actually, the colors that are available kind of are gray, but I just wanted to say that there was...
Caribean, I think.
Something that we should know about as far as your color selection.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, gray-blue is what it is, very neutral and slippery.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes, thank you, by the way, for being here tonight. Just had a couple quick questions, and I don't want this to sound accusatory in any ways, I'm actually coming at this from the angle of more effective communication between the city and property owners. So 20, 20 years, so you operated, did you operate the bed and breakfast that was there since 1983? Was that, was that part of your ownership of the home?
Let's see, we moved in at, let's see, 2003.
Oh, okay.
And we ran it for about three years.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I, part of our overarching goals here, I think, especially with Commissioner Smith and I, are to try and improve communication with homeowners, especially in historic districts. You mentioned that you didn't even know you were in a historic district. Could you give us some suggestions possibly, or some input as a property owner in a historic district? How the city can improve our communication with you as a property owner? So this, you know, so you wouldn't start a, a project without the proper authorizations, if you knew you had to, obviously. So how could, how could we improve our communication with you and your neighbors in these historic districts?
Hmm, yeah, that's a good question, you know. I just found out that you guys need permits for a water heater. Really? Come on, it's a deck.
Right.
But I, you know what, I don't know, because I think, for me personally, when we came into town, we fell in love with the house. We wanted the house, and I looked at my bride, and she says, "Flip, that's my house." And we didn't even know where Placerville was, and we came up here and saw that house, and it just got our heart. And the thing is that I think you get kind of selfish, you know, you're thinking, oh, this is all about us, you know, we wanted an old Victorian house, we wanted to run a bed and breakfast for a while. And, you know, Katy barred the door, the city really had nothing to do with how we were going to perform our expectation of being homeowners in a house like that. You know, come on, it's not a Trex home, it's something different.
Absolutely.
It really is. I mean, it's really an important part of Placerville. So I don't know how you could do that. I, you know, I mean, you got social media nowadays, you've got El Dorado chat, things like that that make it, I don't know, maybe more accessible or whatever to...
Sure.
Just the knowledge, but truly, we came in, into this thing, you know, a couple of kids and blind-eyed and blurry-eyed and just ready to have some fun and live in this county.
Hey, the, the home is beautiful. You know, obviously, there's, there's a couple of, you know, like the fence in the front, I'm sure you guys are gonna address all that, because it's such a beautiful home, and it's such an important part of this city's history.
Right.
And I definitely applaud you guys for doing the improvements. I just really, it, it's tough for us, especially with applicants that start projects, you know, and, and not knowing, and that's kind of where I was trying to direct that.
And I apologize.
No, and I, totally understandable, if you don't know, you don't know, and that's why I really want to try and figure out how we can improve this communication with property owners, so we don't run into this problem. It's uncomfortable for you, it's uncomfortable for us, but, okay, I, I appreciate your input. That's really the only question I had for the applicant.
All right, well, thank you.
Other commissioners have questions of the applicant? Commissioner Leb?
I have a quick question. Do you know when the previous wood deck that was there was built? Like, how long it had been until it completely kind of deteriorated?
Like I said, we moved in 20 years ago, and the, excuse me, the railings, and, well, you know, it was, the wood was two-by-six, so it was pretty solid, for sure. But the railings were starting to deteriorate, and, you know, after a while, like I said, that side of the house takes a beating with the weather. I mean, the, the rain, the wind, and the sun, the sun is not our friend.
Yeah.
Sure.
I understand.
And like I was telling Kristen, I said, we gotta paint these railings pretty soon before they fall apart, by golly.
Yeah, no, I definitely understand. I'm just trying to get a sense if you had reinstalled wood while you were there, so it had been there at least over the 20 years that you've been there, that one?
Yeah.
Okay, great, great.
Right. It was our improvement to fix the deck.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Smith, any questions?
Yes, this question about the wood, redwood, et cetera, do you know what kind of wood was used for the deck before?
Well, when the, when the fellas ripped it apart, you know, I wonder, I'm sure we had treated wood forever, I guess, I don't know, but they were telling me that the, the braces underneath it were invisible.
Invisible meaning what?
Well, they were, they were, they were done, they were done.
Gone, right.
And I don't think it was like treated wood that, you know, people use nowadays to, you know, to, to, you know, stave off the, the weather and stuff like that, so it was just two-by-fours and stuff like that that were falling apart.
The other question's about the surface material of the deck, the color. One photograph has it looking browned or kind of two-tone. You can't see it from here, but you may be able to refresh your memory about which photograph I'm looking at.
I, you know what, I'll tell you what, I bet you that's the sun reflection, because it is blue, gray.
So it's this color?
Yes.
Okay. It may not be exact, but it's close to what?
Not that color, that seems more blue to me.
Okay, but is it blue naturally? I mean, is it just...
I think it was called Caribean.
If you take it at night or towards the evening, it's gonna change color.
No, it's composite, it's a Trex, it stays the same, it doesn't do anything.
Do you have the banisters from what was used before? Did you keep those?
No.
Okay.
Oh, no. Oh, boy, no.
The other thing is questions along the lines of what Commissioner Carter asked, just to help us learn about the process. What stage were you in this restoration work, this repair work, when you first learned about the need for permits and that this was in a historic district?
Right at the very end. Right at the very end. And that's on me, too. I told the guys, I said, I... I told the guys, I said, "Yeah, you know what? Like I said, on me." I didn't think, yeah, I was redoing an existing thing, a deck. And I thought, "By golly, this, this stuff's starting to break." And I have a wife. I have animals. And, uh, you know, if this keeps going like this, somebody's going to get hurt. So, uh, we got Julian and these guys on high recommendation. And so we said, "Okay, we're, we're ready to bite the bullet. Let's, let's get this thing fixed so nobody gets hurt."
And just to reconfirm, the deck is not something you can see from the street?
No way.
Because it's at an angle.
No way.
The balusters, you can see from the street and they replicate what was there before?
Right, yes. That, well, you know what? Now, the, the, the old balusters were, uh, how should I say? More rounded and stuff like that. These, you know, you're having to deal with what the new materials are. So these guys are still balusters and they're still Victorian, but they're a little bit different in, uh, how they were made.
Okay, now the other question is about the distance the balusters were initially. Are they about the same distance?
About, yes.
Okay. The reason I ask is because there's code requirements for the distance so that children don't fall through, that kind of thing. So it sounds like it's the same as what it was before.
Yeah, right. You know, I, and I think, I think way back when, they, uh, you know, that, you didn't have that, those codes and stuff like that. And I think they were a little bit further apart anyway, you know? It was different. Construction was different way back when, so. And I couldn't tell you, like you were asking, I think that thing was, you know, built twenty-five, thirty years ago. I couldn't tell you for sure.
Commissioner Carter, you have a follow-up question?
If you don't mind, I'm sorry, that just kind of jogged my, um, on the front porch, you are keeping the balusters that were there previously, right? Because that, that decorative element of the rounded, you know, it, it matches with the, with the top finestrations and all the, okay. So the, the front balusters, you are maintaining the original ones, just the back ones that you replaced?
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah. That front baluster, though, is, that's pretty classic.
Oh, it's, it's, it's super unique and very interesting.
Whoever did that was cool.
Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure. I noted on the picture that the deck was done and that baluster was still in place. I wanted to make sure we were maintaining that front baluster. Okay, excellent, thank you. That was my question.
So, uh, Mr. Donnell, you folks purchased the home approximately in two thousand and three and then, uh, decided to, um, run it, continue operation as a bed and breakfast, is that correct?
That is correct.
Had you ever run a bed and breakfast before?
Nope.
No, so you just decided to jump in with, with both feet? So that was, that was pretty brave, I, I think. Did you have to get a, uh, did you have to get a business license to do that operation?
Yes, we did. We had to go to health training school. We did, uh, we did-
How did, how did you determine you had to have a business license?
Uh, through the, the, the city. They told us.
And, but you didn't anticipate you'd have to have any kind of a permit to do the reconstruction work?
Well, that was over twenty years ago, so, yeah.
Yes, we generally find that, uh, regulations and requirements tend not to wane with time. They tend to become more expansive, but, uh, that's a different discussion.
Well, let me ask you a question, Neil, real quick. When we first moved into this place, um, it was painted all one color. So Kathy and I, my wife, and I said, "We wanted it to be a painted lady." So we met no resistance from anybody in the county and we just painted that house to something spectacular.
Right. Yeah, that's because there, there's no CCNRs. You're not in a planned development or, uh, place where there's CCNRs and the city doesn't have any kind of res- fortunately, there are no restrictions imposed by the city on what you might paint your house. Your neighbors might complain, but that is the benefit and bane of private ownership unless you're in a planned development where they have CCNRs. But it, it kind of, kind of goes that way. So painting is a little bit different than actual construction. And, um, I'm not arguing necessarily for having to have a permit to do a water heater, although I know firsthand that you have to and have complied in this week, in fact. So, all right, I, I am, I'm, I'm, um, disposed to approve the project as, as you presented. I'm not opposed to the Trex. First, we have other, uh, issues that you may not be aware of that we have to discuss with regards to that, that aren't necessarily your project specific, that are a little bit more general. So I appreciate your time coming here this evening.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant from Commissioners? All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the audience wish to speak for or against the project, please?
I don't wish to speak for or against the project. However, you were asking the question of how can we better communicate? I have a house at Spring and Bedford, which is in the historic district. I, I have a home, um, at Spring and Bedford in the historic district for six years now. And my experience has been that it's very, very, very difficult to get information on what is required when you try and do any sort of renovation or repair. Now, my house was built, we presume, I think eighteen eighty, sort of, just looking at photographs. And of course, it's been modified at least, at least six or seven times. Uh, it used to have twelve-foot ceilings. It has eight-foot ceilings now. And, you know, this is no gem. This was a minor shack. And so, you know, it's just built on a rock foundation. I don't know how it would ever pass any sort of building codes now, but we love it. And, uh, you know, we spend most of our time at the property in Coloma, so. But we always want to know how to do this and, and where do we go to get permits? And the other thing is, looking at the homes around us, how do we? Because we've had some real problems with the lovely building right at the corner of Bedford and Spring and it's become a multi-unit, um, apartment with many, many, many people living there. And so that seems to me like that should be part of the building, um, Commission's work to kind of figure out what's going on there. And, um, I've complained about this for about two, two and a half years now. And again, very difficult to get answers. And, um, I get different answers from different departments in the city. So it would seem to me, I've just hearing about this workshop, I will be there. I'm very, very interested in, we want to preserve this community and we don't want, you know, when we moved in, there was a huge, uh, drug, um, thing going on across the street from us. And just getting action on that took a year and a half, two years, something like that. And there was huge amounts of drugs going through on a daily basis. This is on Bedford. Well, this is the historic district and really we can't get any sort of traction? So I think things are improving slightly, but the people that live there, those of us that live there, we know each other. We really would like the city to help us out and figure out not only how, um, the buildings are being renovated, but is there any policy in terms of rental, in terms of how many people can occupy a building? Where is parking? I know that, um, there are parking regulations, but those aren't abided by. Nobody really follows any of that. So what is your recourse? How, how do, as an owner, how do you preserve the integrity of the community? And our home, for instance, has this amazing stone staircase that goes down to Spring Street. And, um, I would never want that to be destroyed, but it could be really easily if someone didn't care about it and just decided, "Oh, well, we can tear this out." Well, you could never put it back. There's no way to put that staircase back. You know, it's a two-story stone staircase. So that's really significant, I think. But I don't want to become a historic, I'm not a registered historic home and I don't want to become one because I don't want to come to any more meetings like this than I need to. I mean, I'm not putting you guys down. It's just, you know, I mean, you kind of open a, a box of worms and I don't really want to do that. But I do want to maintain the integrity of the area and how to deal with the trees and all that sort of stuff because it's, it's very, um, complicated. And so there should be a place to go and ask those questions.
Thank you, and I appreciate your comments, as I think all of the members of the Commission do. We look forward to your attendance on the twenty-ninth. You actually touched on one of my issues that I would have raised at that meeting and that is resources that the city can and should provide to anyone that has a home or is looking to have property in the historic district. Those are the things that we need to do because the city values the historic district. And I will not take your comment about not ever wanting to come to one of these meetings as a personal affront to the way the meeting is conducted. Anyone else in the audience wish to, uh, address the Commission on this issue? Seeing that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the Commission for discussion and possible action. Does anyone wish to begin the conversation? Just start with Commissioner Kenny.
I'm always willing to start and jump in and out. Unlike you, I'm not, uh, inclined to approve the project as presented to us. I had a lot of, um, difficulty with this project. And my thoughts are, this is, this is the case that we've often talked about. This is the house that is on the National Historic Register as opposed to what Placerville defined as a historic district. That elevates this house, uh, way above, I think, anything else this Commission has considered, certainly since I've been a, a planning commissioner. This, this particular structure is, um, on the register. And that calls for strict adherence to the SOI standards that we've discussed. And, um, we've often talked about the importance of replacing, uh, an element with, um, the same kind of materials. And we've had a little discussion back and forth, you know? If it was red, uh, if it was wood, would it be redwood or would it be locally sourced? There's really no way of us knowing at this point, you know, what originally was used. But, uh, you know, the application discusses redwood. And certainly there are redwood decks that last, you know, thirty years or whatever. I've got one. The durability of the Trex material is, um, well, if you're not familiar with it, it is, uh, pretty well-known. It's, uh, it's very durable. That's not to say it doesn't fail. It's not to say it doesn't cup or, uh, crack. I've had that, uh, experience actually on a property that I owned. And so, you know, it's not, it's not perfect. It looks fantastic in the photos now and, you know, I congratulate you on a, a great installation. And, um, having, and also I want to say that again, that I appreciate, uh, your passion for this house and how you want to maintain it. So this is how I've been going back and forth, is that, uh, this is the jewel. This is the jewel Cedar Ravine, if not, you know, Placerville. We've got a few sprinkled around the city, but this, this is one that people actually might even come here to look at, you know, if they're on a tour of historic properties. That is one of the benefits of being on the National Historic Register. People who, um, are into that, they, they travel around. They come to our community to see those houses and that's a, a benefit to us. It, you know, stimulates the economy. So in this case, I'm, um, we need to, if we're going to approve the project as described, we need to substantiate why we're allowing a substitution of, of material and not go with, not requiring with replacement with same-kind material. As we've gone over, we have many window replacement projects. And this is something you really should go back and look in the archives, how we, uh, work around and really struggle with that. Another element, I, I disagree with the staff's analysis. You know, I, I recognize that the distinctive features that you see from the street, and again, I'll say I did see the decking from the street, um, but yeah, that, that didn't catch my eye. What catches the eye are the decorative elements. But without a deck, you don't have those decorative elements. So I, I have to disagree with your analysis of splitting apart. I think that, um, that's incorrect. When I read the, um, SOI guidelines, you know, they, they don't talk about decking versus a deck. They talk about a deck. It's a, the, the feature of the house is the deck. And so to say that, you know, well, we're keeping the, the decorative parts, but we don't care about the decking, I don't think that's the, um, correct interpretation of where, what the, the guidelines intend. As we've discussed before, though, we can, um, make a finding for a substitution. And so that's where I, I really struggled with this application is, what's been presented to the Planning Commission to this point just doesn't, I don't, we need the applicant to tell us why. And, um, why was it infeasible? That's, that's really a word that I've kind of focused on. Why is it infeasible to replace in kind? We, we've asked applicants that before. And so honestly, um, what I would like you all to consider at this point is continuing this item and asking the property owner to come back with a clear statement to us and for the record that says why the Trex, why it was infeasible to replace with wood? Because, um, I think somewhat, I can't remember who mentioned, um, it, it, people who are strict adherents to the SOI standards, if, uh, we just approve this without a, a clear statement of, of why the choice was made, why it was infeasible? What's the benefit to the house? And we simply don't have it. We have a description of what the project is. But because, um, this is in violation of standard number six, and I, I really do advise you to, uh, get online and, and read the Secretary of Interior Standards since you own this, uh, property on the National Historic Register. It's really to your benefit to, to read up on that. But standard six reads, um, "Deteriorated features will be repaired rather than replaced. Where the severity, severity of deterioration requires replacement of a distinctive feature, a new feature will match the old in design, color, texture, and where possible, materials." So that's the standard that I'm looking at. That's the standard that our ordinance for the city, for our historic districts is, that we need to look at this guideline. And the, part of the work of the Planning Commission is to consider variations from that. But we have to, we have to make something that's robust. So we have to have a finding that's robust so that if someone questions our decision, appeals our decision, we can say, "Well, here's, here's the evidence." So, um, I have a lot more I could say, but, uh, anyway, that's, that's my thinking. I, um, I actually, you know, I appreciate the, the great colored pictures. I, I realize what you, you know, your before and after, it really does tell the story. But I don't think that we are, I, I, I don't feel comfortable approving the proposal as, as it stands tonight.
Commissioner Kenny, I'd like to follow up on, uh, there's, there's two elements here. Two specific, two elements specific to the project, if I understand it correctly. One is the wood balusters and the other one is the decking, right? Are those the two basic elements?
And I think that's our, our mistake. I think we should, it's a deck.
All right, well, okay. Well, all right, but, uh, the Trex only applies to the flooring component, not to the balusters, right?
Right, I don't know that those could be made of a synthetic material.
So don't, don't, I'm not challenging you. My, my question is not to challenge. My question is really more of an intellectual exercise because I'm, I'm, my frustration on this whole SOI thing knows no bounds. To the extent that the balusters, even though the redwood are going to be painted, why would it matter? And I'm just talking, this is an exercise, having just seen Up and Down. This is an exercise in theory, right? Not so much practicality. But wood is wood. If they're going to be painted, would it really matter to us, in your view, in terms of its consistency with the SOI? matter to us, in your view, in terms of its consistency with the SOI, whether it was redwood or some other, other wood? It's going to be painted. The fact it's painted doesn't change the architectural and visual impact, right? It's, it's painted. They look exactly the same, they're just made of a different type of wood. It could be birch wood, it could be elm wood, it could be walnut, but they're painted. So are the balusters really an issue here? Or is that like?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so those-
Except that I don't think it's proper for us to split. It's, the element is the deck. The deck is as decorative, has-
But it's made of two different, it's made of more than, it's made of multiple components, though. It's made of different materials. So we certainly could approve the redwood balusters because they're going to be painted, right? We could certainly say, "Okay, those are going to be painted, so that's okay. Let's talk about the decking material itself." Because in that, that's a non-wood material. That's clearly not a, we don't use the term like-for-like. That's clearly not a similar.
What is it? Same kind?
It's okay, that's clearly not same kind, right?
Mm-hmm.
Now, now we can also talk about the fire safety element, because Trex is much, much superior from a fire safety perspective than wood is, right? So, and we live in a high-fire area, so if we're looking for a finding, just throwing that out there.
Right. And, and so my point in that is that, you know, we often do that work for-
I want to go back to the balusters, though, first. I want to go back, because I really, because I really do think those have to be separated, because the, the balusters are, they're, they're wood for wood, right? Even though it's redwood versus whatever wood it was, more than likely pine, I would presume, if I had, if I had to make a guess, it was going to be pine, some sort of pine, right? Sugar pine, logpole pine, it would be, that would have been a more common material. It could have been cedar, I suppose, but, but it doesn't, if they're painted, if they're painted, I don't think it really matters, does it?
I think wood is, you know, same kind, in this case, where we're not, the decorative feature is not necessarily the green of the wood or the color of the wood. It's, in this case, same kind wood, wood.
Wood, okay. So, so would it be fair to say we could take the, the balusters out of the equation for, at least for now?
No, I, I think the element is the deck. The deck, it has, has parts. But the element that's being, that was, what was taken away was the deck.
Yeah, okay. Well, I, I don't, I don't agree with that, but my theoretical-
Well, that's just, that's the way I, when I reviewed the standards, they don't talk about decking versus railings. They, they talk about the, the element is the deck.
Okay, all right. Other commissioners? Commissioner Lepper?
Yeah. So as, as often happens, I had the same thought process that you did, and a lot of the things that you have pointed out also popped out to me. I am aware of the fire safety, and the gentleman did mention the weather being diminishing to the wood. So I do take that into account if we are to decide between Trex. But when I was reviewing the application, I, I wrote that, you know, obviously, the homeowner knew it was a unique house. That is just a unique thing when you move in. And it might be a little different if it wasn't on the registry, but that does make an impact to me. I do think that there is a higher level of standard that we want to make sure is being upheld in those kinds of homes. I think that if someone else were to buy the house and is sort of a purist on the SOI standards, that they would look at that as a modern, that would, basically, if I moved in and I was a purist on historic homes, I would rip that out and put a wood deck in, because that is the materials, the, the standards. When the home was added to the 1985, in 1985, I should say, when it was added, two of the sentences that struck me about the home in the description were that overall, the property retains integrity of workmanship, materials, and setting, unlike many of the remaining late 19th century houses in present-day Placerville. And secondly, at the end states that the home retains the integrity of materials and design and is listed in the city's Historic Resource Survey. So to me, that is a key feature of the home, that it actually still had those materials. Obviously, it's, you know, at least a 20-year-old deck. We don't know when it was built, but it was built out of wood, just like it was in the past. Secondly, in the, in the description, it says many of the changes made to the house were made in the early 1900s. So this house really is an example of being as it was 125-plus years ago. And I really do think that that needs to be taken into consideration, because while I'm not 100% against the Trex, if we have reason to believe that that is a necessary change, I think following our guidelines and our historic choices, wood would be what we should be requiring based on how we've approached other historic homes, how we value the historic homes and discuss that in general. We, we talk about it being a priority. We talk about being very important and that we do follow these guidelines. I, too, am really excited for this joint meeting, because I would love some clarity on what our city guidelines are. But I, I did, as I was reviewing and, and thinking about this application, I kept going back to, it should be wood. I mean, I really do think that according to our stated priorities and guidelines, that it should be wood. And I do find city staff to be very available. I went through a home project myself that required a lot of permitting and a lot of back and forth between departments. I found that to be a process. I think a lot of times you don't want to ask the city for things, because it can result in definitely extra expenses on the homeowner, but it's how we uphold our city, our city standards. And so that is a part of, of this consideration, that if, you know, it had been asked prior, prior to implementing, prior to putting in the stuff, it would have been said, "Whoa, this needs to go before us. We could look at it." I hate the idea of if it's done, necessarily the, the cost or the requirement of that, but I think it should have come before us prior to that being done, and that might be an unfortunate consequence of that not happening. Yeah, I, I really, I, I feel for, I do understand the, the weather and the fire protection, but where I landed on this is that it should have been a wood deck that was built.
Thank you. And I think it's worth pointing out that it's to the applicant's peril that they proceeded without permits and went ahead and did the work in advance. Just, I kind of see my role this evening, right now, is just teasing out from the minds of my fellow commissioners. To whose value, the, the owner of the property or to the city, are we, are we really concerned? Right? You, you brought up the example, if somebody else were to come and look at, and buy the home, then the first thing they might do is pull out the Trex and put in wood. But is that really our concern, or is that really the property owner's concern in terms of the value of resale, right? That's, that's just a hypothetical question. And then, and then kind of getting to the, the comment about, well, we need to have, given this, this particular property, and you're right, I, I took a second look when I realized what property we were dealing with, and I was just going through the report. I'm a little bit bothered by the, the concept of a, a higher degree of application of the standard, a higher standard of, of application, because it's something, not just a home in the historic district, but it's one on the registry. Right? Now, we have a different standard for that. We have a two-tiered, or three, even three-tiered system of application of standards. I'm a little bit uncomfortable with that. But at the same time, are we also, is it our expectation, this is rhetorical for the 29th, that's what a lot of my discussion is tonight, for the 29th, is it our expectation that people preserve their homes as museums? Particularly something that's on, on the registry?
To respond to that about the higher level, I think, I would argue that we've actually seen homes of lesser significance and held them to a higher standard for being in the historic district. And now we have one I would consider to be of a higher standard, and you're kind of insinuating to lower the standard. And so I just think that there is a discrepancy there, because we've talked about homes that don't have historic significance that we're aware of, or don't have visual historic significance that strikes us as being significant. But we hold them to the historic, historic neighborhood standards, which, for example, the windows, right? So a home built in the 1950s, we've had them say, "No, you need to have wood windows." But now a home that's built in the 1800s, we're allowing for a composite material. So I actually kind of disagree with it being a varied thing. I think that our, our goal has been to have all of that historic district maintained, and that we have done our best to do so. And so I'm not saying, I'm not picking on this one as being something, but I do think that it is a superior, a higher level, I think, of, of significance when you look at it.
And you'll recall that my opening question to staff was why we were comfortable allowing the Trex as opposed, as opposed to wood, just to point that out.
Let's think about-
Gavin, I would like to ask Commissioner Smith-
I just wanted to interject, though, you talk about the different tiers. And one reason to hold this to a higher standard, I think it's important to say this at this point, so please just bear with me. The benefit of being on the historic register is that the homeowner is, if it has the integrity and it has that ranking, they are eligible for grants to help keep the house, to restore the house. I also talked about the Mills Act. That's a state law where there's a tax benefit for, if you do restore. Now, I, I think that's something where the city needs to step up and, and enroll us in that to help preserve our, not only our historic districts, but in particular, structures like this. So I don't think we have an arbitrary multi-tier system. I think it's, it's real. When you have the National Historic Register designation, it puts, it already puts you, by federal law, puts you in a different category. So we, we aren't being arbitrary. This is, this is the law, law of the land, the law of the, the federal government, the state of California, and then as well as, and the city of, of Placerville is the first line of defense. I mean, as we've said, you know, the permit should, they should have applied for a permit. That's the place where the city can step up and say, "Oh, wait a minute. You are on the historic register. You are held to, you know, higher standards." So I just want, thought it was important to say that we're, you know, point out, we're not being arbitrary. These, this is how it works.
Not to be argumentative, but you did say in this case, we should impose a higher standard. Those were your, and, and I'm, I'm not, we either, the ordinance, our ordinance references to Secretary of Interior Standards and Guidelines. It doesn't say this level of, of adherence to that. It says, "Here's what we adhere to." So I think we need to choose our words carefully in terms of how we define it. Now, that's not to say that I'm not appreciating and recognizing this particular structure as a jewel. I think your, your words, you're absolutely correct in that, right? But the same standard that we apply here then has to apply to all structures then within the historic district. I guess that's kind of what I'm getting to, right? It can't be, "Well, this is such a special place. We can't make any exception whatsoever, or we have to have a different standard."
That's not what I'm saying at all. What I'm saying is that in this particular case, we need to have robust findings. And within the standards, as we, you know, we'll find out this, I've had the benefit of sitting through some of these videos, and, and this may just be my interpretation of the interior standards. I'm not an expert by any means, but I have taken the time to review them and looked at case studies. You, there, exceptions can be made. And infeasibility, we've talked about economics, availability, so on. But it's incumbent on the decision-making body to make that finding. And so my idea of the continuance is for us to more easily make that finding in line with the thinking of the applicant. So that's, that's the way I interpret those SOI standards or guidelines.
Thank you. This is not a dead horse. We shall continue to beat it. Commissioner Carter, then Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Chair. Quick to, to your point, Chair, regarding whose benefit are we trying to accrue here, whether it's the homeowner or the city? I think it's both. But I think the SOI standards, just by the nature of the fact that they only apply to the exterior of the home, and only when it's visible from a right-of-way, I think speaks to the fact that the SOI standards are more geared towards preserving the value of the property for the community, not necessarily for the homeowner. The fact that they can do anything they want in the interior, and we have no say over it, kind of speaks to that, to that point. So just a quick thought regarding your question regarding, you know, who are the standards meant to benefit the homeowner or the community? I think it's both, but I think the standards in specific are to benefit the community, just by their nature. In regards to the fire, the SOI, to my knowledge, does not speak to fire safety or, I mean, obviously, you know, it, it has to be included in our conversation, but the standards do not speak to fire safe or firehardiness. They speak to materials and replacements and repairs. It is quite obvious from the, the first photo in Attachment 3 that this was not repairable. I mean, you can see there's literally holes where, where boards were broken. So it obviously needed to be replaced. And speaking to Commissioner Keen's point regarding standard number six, I don't have it in front of me, but I think, kind of getting back to what I was talking about earlier, about key architectural elements, well, that, that standard speaks to a distinctive element. And so I guess the, the linchpin of that argument is, is, is that decking a distinctive element, or are the railings, the balustrades, the, you know, the actual decorative elements of the deck, are those the distinctive elements that we should preserve? Or is the decking surface itself? I'm of the opinion, as I stated earlier, that the decking itself is not distinctive. I agree with Commissioner Lepper that if this had come before us, before the repair was made, and this, this is, you know, where this gets difficult and sticky, I'm sure that we would have made the decision, or we would have made the recommendation, that they replace it with wood. But now it's been done, and while you talk about financial feasibility, is it financially feasible for us to ask him to tear this out and replace it with wood? I think he has a pretty good argument that it's not. So I'm falling back on my original argument, that I do not believe that the decking surface itself is a distinctive element in this, in, in this project. I believe that the, the decorative elements that he is maintaining in this are the key distinctive elements that need to be preserved. I did have one quick question of staff, because when I did the, the site visit, I could not see the back deck from either Cedar Ravine or because of all the trees and the overgrowth on the right side of the property. I forget what the name of that street is I had to park on to walk down to the property. I couldn't see the deck from that road either. And then there's a driveway, which I don't believe is a public right-of-way on the left-hand side. I wasn't comfortable walking up it because it looked like it was a private, a private driveway. Is that back deck visible from a public right-of-way?
You mean the, the side deck?
I'm sorry, the side deck. I apologize, yeah.
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. I, I just, I must have missed it, because I was looking, I, I saw the front deck, but, yeah, okay.
Yeah, from Thompson, you can see that. Although, that's an empty lot. The planning commission approved a, a structure to be built there, has not yet been-
So that would shield it at that point.
If that got built, you wouldn't see it.
Exactly. So, so many different, so many different, yeah. So I guess my main point is I'm, I'm falling back on my, on my earlier position, that I, I don't, I don't consider the decking surface to be a distinctive element in this deck. Although I find your argument compelling also, that the deck itself, so I'm a little torn, but I'm, I'm kind of falling back to my earlier position. I, I think that the decking surface is okay because it's not distinctive enough to warrant exact materials. So I welcome more conversation on that point.
I think it's safe to say that having a deck is clearly an architectural feature that was period to this house. I'm curious, if they had come, if the applicant had come to us requesting to do the, the proposed work, and before doing any of the work, and they had requested to put in the Trex material as opposed to the wood material, what would your position on it be? And you don't have to answer that at the moment if you don't feel comfortable.
I, I think I already did. I think I, I would have fallen, you know, previously, if, I, I would have said wood would have been the proper replacement, but-
Right. And then I'll just point out that whether or not the applicant has to remove, undo the work they've done, would not be a subject to fees, economic feasibility, as the council has already indicated by their action on a previous project. So I don't think we can use that as a finding, just, just to say it. Commissioner Smith, I'm sure you have a few things you'd like to offer on this.
Well, I'm impressed with the comments I've heard from Commissioners Keen and Lepper. They're very persuasive. The reason for being torn is because we can all identify with the plight of the owner. And it's not like some of the situations we've had, where someone comes in, it's a couple, where one's a realtor and the other one's a contractor, and they know fully well what was involved, that it was an historic district. what was involved, that it was an historic district. And they've acknowledged that in some hearings. This is not that kind of situation. So we have that, that component, and it would help us if we could explore that separately and find out, what about the contractor? The contractor certainly should know, when they come in, that it's required. When you call a plumber to put in a water heater, they'll tell you that it's required to have a permit. So for purposes of planning, diagnostic, to look at how to solve these problems for the future, it'd be helpful to explore those things. But for purposes of this application, I'm persuaded by the comments of Commissioners Keen and Lepper. Also, I didn't know what videotapes you said, but I would urge that you looked at. But what I would urge you all to do is to look at two videotapes that are on the city's website. There were two workshops sponsored by the city. One of them was sponsored by the Heritage Association with the city. Another one was the city with the State Historic Preservation Office. And what's interesting, and it's a story that should get out there, is that contrary to popular belief, the standards, having, number one, the existence of standards, like ours, or the, or the National Registry, it doesn't matter, but having standards and having an enforcement mechanism always leads to the improvement of property value in that area, and it increases sales tax revenue. There are just study after study after study, and they all say the same thing. Did I read them all? No, but I read the findings from most of them, and they say the same thing. So there is a foundation that supports what Commissioners Keen and Lepper have said. Again, I'm torn because, yes, we want them to be fire safe in this day and age, but there are a lot of ways to achieve that. And the plight they're in, how much of it, there are some suggestions I can make later in a different part of our agenda. But if we have standards, we need to follow them. And you're right, the, the idea of the National Registry certainly sets it apart, but all homes in that district are entitled to it. And as a matter of law, under the Environmental Quality Act, when it talks about preservation of historic materials, it does not have to be on the historic registry. It could be, that it's subject to be enabled to be listed, is the criteria. That's what's in that law. Anyway, I am, just want you to know that, based on what I've heard, upon reflection, that's what I'm moving towards. And I think as far as the costs, I don't know, I haven't heard what the costs are decking, how much square footage there is, but that's my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to go ahead and offer for the benefit of the commission that my position on this is, is changing. As I've said several times in this hearing, I was favorably disposed to this project. But the more I reflect, I think it's going to be difficult to make a finding for why we would deviate from the SOI for the decking. And while that, I haven't been comfortable with it from the time I read it in the application, as my opening questions to staff would indicate. But I think it's compounded by the fact that the applicant didn't get a permit. And all of this frankly could have been avoided by, by getting a permit upfront, because we could have had this discussion before any work was done, before any money was spent, and then we could have had a decision. And I'm not sure our decision would be any different in terms with the requirement for the material. So I think at this point, where unless my mind is persuaded, unless I'm persuaded strongly, I will probably deny the application on the basis of the use of the materials for the decking. I'm not concerned about the balustrade. The wood material doesn't bother me at all, because it's going to be painted. But I think the use, as much as I like Trex, that's a great material, and I think it's superior to wood. And this raises a lot of questions for me in terms of, well, what can be seen from the street, and what can't be seen from the street? Really, to follow your argument, Commissioner, even your argument, it really isn't whether or not it can be seen from the street, which is what I've always thought was kind of the standard for the application of the SOI, if you could see if it was visible from the street, because you can replace windows with vinyl if they aren't seen from the street, right? So I have a real conflict even, even with that. And I, and I don't like conflict, I'm troubled by that, because I want to be consistent and defensible in whatever my vote is, right? And, and so right now, I'm unhappy about it. But, but I, I think, I think in this case, and not because it's what a special property this is, but just going purely by the SOI, and by the fact that a permit wasn't pulled upfront, which really created, created difficulty in and of itself, then I will more than likely vote no. So that's where I'm at, at this point.
I would like to consider a medium too, because I, when I was digging around about being a nationally-registered historic building, that doesn't actually trigger anything, it's the local laws that do, right? So it's actually, he doesn't have any requirements to do any of this stuff by being a nationally-registered historic home. It's our local laws that actually trigger this stuff. Does that make sense? So he's not bound to any, any rules on a national level about the, the materials and things like that used on the home? Am I incorrect in stating that? That was my understanding that.
I'm not sure about that, but.
Being on the registry doesn't trigger you, yeah, doesn't trigger you automatically having these kinds of rules applied to you, but local, our local laws are what really is triggering these, these to be required. I don't know if I'm stating that well. But basically, I'm also wondering if it would be beneficial, and I hate to do this again what we did with the windows, but to wait to discuss this until after our city council joint meeting, as so as to potentially save the, the saying no, you know, and you have to rip it out and put a wood deck in. The reason that I stand on that potential for a change in findings is the fire stuff. I wonder if when we're discussing the historic districts, if there is going to be an option with the city council to consider firehardiness when considering materials that we're using in these neighborhoods? Basically, what I'm saying is that could be.
I would say only if that it becomes codified, if after the meeting, the city council takes action to make that a new ordinance, but until that point, we're bound by what's on the books.
Yes.
And, you know, something that occurred to me, you know, I think you said that if the applicant had, had gone for a permit, and it came before us, and they said, we want to, we want to, and said, so we should not be thinking about what's in there, but if we had a fresh applicant, application, we want to use Trex. What would we say then? And how would we apply the guidelines? So that's why I come back and I, I'm just about ready to make a motion to, for the continuance, because I think we need that evidence for us to really, to be fair to the next application. So regardless, whether this gets torn out or this remains, the next historic district application comes to us, they want a new deck, they haven't done it, and they want to use a material, we have to be fair. And whatever decision we make, again, has to be robust, defensible, and, and we don't have that information. And it's really, since we're not the, we're not the applicant, we're not the experts, that's why it's incumbent on the applicant to bring that information before this body, so that we can, so it's in the public record, and people can comment on it. You know, we could hash out a finding, we've done that many times, and it's, it's not pretty. But given this, I really think it's incumbent on the applicant to give us, provide us that information that we're in need of, so that the next time this comes before us, we can be fair to that project as well.
I want to be clear on, on one point. If, if we were to take action on this, because I made a statement a moment ago about the, the balustrades and being wood, they're going to be painted, it's no big deal, and you seem to kind of indicate with a shake of your, but that kind of goes against your earlier comment, it says, well, that's all, it's the entire deck that's kind of a thing, as opposed to separating the two features out, which is what I was trying to do earlier.
Mm-hmm.
And I didn't sense that you were agreeable to that, but maybe perhaps not so much. So I'm, for, well, a motion, we certainly have a motion to flat-out deny, we could have a motion in its entirety, we could have a motion to continue, or we could have a motion to approve the use of the redwood component, but deny the use of the Trex, right? So I think those are the, I think those are the three directions that we could probably, we could probably go. If we do a motion to continue, Pierre, he just stepped away. Okay, gotcha. I was gonna, I'm gonna last Pierre, because what would, a motion to continue, hopefully we would, we would be hoping for some guidance from council after the 20, meeting on the 29th, but I'm not sure that.
Oh, good question.
Pierre, being back at a timely moment. For a motion to continue, first of all, by the way, I point out that the work's already done, right? Boom, the deck's in. So if we, if we continue it, there's no rush in terms of when it comes back, except whatever limitation staff's going to tell me about. Doesn't have to be done in, in two weeks, because material's already in there, right? So when they might be forced to tear it out, it's a different story. My, my, my point is, Pierre, let's say we go to, we have the hearing on the 29th, we get some direction from council as to how we might apply the standards with regards to a hypothetical situation of a home in the historic district, and they want to replace a, a wood deck with Trex, right? And the council gives us some direction, but let's just say hypothetically is favorable to the applicant that's here tonight, hypothetically speaking. Would we be able to use any direction from the council on the 29th? Or would we have to wait for formal action by the council at a subsequent regular meeting of the city council before we could use that in our, whenever this item was continued? I hope that made sense.
That's a very good, very, very good question. What I, what I see happening is whether or not the city's going to apply strict adherence to the Secretary of Interior Standards for rehabilitation of historic buildings in our historic districts. So, you know, these standards are to be applied equally to this house versus a house built in 1940. And I think there's a lot of angst that I see, and I've seen in the past amongst planning commissioners and city council members, on the application and how strongly we apply those standards. Because I think, you know, staff felt that the deck was, you know, barely visible, I think is the term that I used early on, it, in this discussion. And so, but I think a lot of the, this was a very good discussion that your commission is, is having tonight. And so, from staff's perspective, I'm looking forward to this meeting. And I think that's what this comes, comes down to, because I think if, if staff were to have applied the strict adherence to Secretary of Interior Standards, we would have required wood, that you can't do Trex, you replace it with wood.
So I hope that kind of answers your question.
That becomes the question for the council. Is the adherence absolute? Really, I'm really, is the adherence absolute to SOI? At the end of the day, that, that really becomes the issue, is the adherence absolute?
But I think, I think your, your question is, if we gain information on the 29th, can we come back at the next meeting and apply that? Isn't that what you were wondering about?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's true, that without.
Oh, I see, and I apologize. I think I didn't finish my, I got kind of wrapped, I went off on my own tangent. So I think what'll happen is, count, counts, the city council may give direction to staff to revise the ordinance. So until such that happens, this is our code. And so if they want to deviate or change from the Secretary of Interior Standards, they will. I mean, there was a whole, whole discussion earlier about Secretary and, Secretary and Tier Standards applying to, say, the Montechello, or, or Mount Vernon. Well, that's for the entire structure, inside and out, whether you see it from the street or not. It's the city code that says only what's visible from a public street. So that was, that's kind of, but it's still applying strict Secretarian standards to any part of that building that's visible from the street. I always thought that was kind of fraught with issues, because we have a situation where, I recall in the past, a homeowner had vinyl windows on the rear that wasn't visible, and then the argument was, well, I don't want inconsistent windows on my house, I want them all the same. So that's a problem as well. So it's those kinds of questions I hope will be ferreted out during this robust workshop that's planned on the 29th. But nothing's going to change until the council gives direction to staff to modify the code. Modification of the code is, it can come back to you, because you're going to make that recommendation, and the council to modify the code per what you feel was kind of the sense of consensus following the workshop.
How long could we reasonably continue this item? I mean, the work's already done, so it's not like there's any, from my perspective, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not like, well, it's got to come out, you know, within two weeks, or we've appealed to council, or whatever.
Yeah, that's a difficult question, because a building permit is required to do this. We can't hold this building permit open indefinitely.
How long could you hold it open for?
A year.
Fine, okay, so we have, we have that much time. Do you think it's, it wouldn't be unreasonable, we could probably get through the ordinance change, if there's going to be one, within a year? Okay.
We say more than likely.
Okay. Okay, so that, I'm just throwing that out, that, that's just an option. That might be the, the least painful option for the applicant, short of a approval the project is presented this evening, which I'm not necessarily seeing.
That's, that's where I'm landing. It's, it's kind of like, rather than say, I don't see how I could approve this as it's presented with our current guidelines and our historical, not historical with reference to the neighborhood, but our, our decisions historically that we've made on the historic district. I think that that would make me fall into where it needs to be wood, based on what it is. I would like to get through that joint meeting to see if anything changes, because what I would hate to do is say, go rip out this material that's been utilized, purchased, put in, and then in two weeks, go, actually, we're okay with that kind of material in our historic districts, because it does look nice, it is fire safe, there's a lot of, there's benefits to it. I don't not see those benefits. I just can't approve that with our ordinance as it is now. So in an effort to not deny and have that ripped, to deny and have that be ripped out immediately, I really would like to urge a continuance, rather than deny or approve as it is currently, especially with that meeting being just so close. I mean, I feel like every meeting, we're like, we're so close to hashing this out. I think it would be beneficial to the homeowner potentially, and to ourselves to continue the item.
Well, I would never want to put the applicant in this position. We could also deny, and they could appeal to the council, and then it'd be really curious to see what the council would do with that appeal being brought to them, but that's additional expense on the part of the applicant. And then if the council denied it, they'd have to pull it out. So the applicant's best hopes might be for a continuance for up to, we don't have to do a date certain, right? No, we could say no later than one year.
I would recommend that you continue it off calendar, not, not to exceed the life of the building permit.
That's great, yeah, that's, that's a good.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Off calendar, not to exceed the life of the building permit.
So that's right. Oh, I'm sorry, Chair Friend. They don't have a building permit, because they have to get approval of a site plan review prior to being issued a building permit, because we won't issue a building permit that's inconsistent with the planning commission's approved site plan review.
Okay, so they remain in violation of city code because they've constructed without a permit. Now, are there, are there fines associated with that action on their part, or?
Not currently. It was, I believe, a notice to correct, and they came in within the specified timeline.
Is there anything that we can do here this evening to postpone those fines? To put it in abeyance? To put it in abeyance?
That's not in our, I had a question about the safety. Is the, is the project complete? Are all the railings installed so that the deck is, I looked at one picture and it looks like the railing is only partially complete. So is there a safety, any safety concerns with postponing?
As a homeowner's issue.
Well, we really can't answer that because they don't have a building permit, which would then trigger review and approval of the plans, and then it would also trigger inspections of the deck by city staff, so we're not gonna do that. I just want to make one other thing, and it's, and it's not that I'm saying to go this, this direct course of direction, but certainly you would have the option of approving the project and modifying the conditions of approval, specifying that wood would be required for the deck. Not saying you have to go in that direction, but just keep in mind, you always have that option because you're, you're approving much of the project, but you would just modify condition of approval for, for that portion of the project.
So then they would pull the permit, they could pull the permit. Then if, if council were to provide direction or indic, an indication that, you know, in, in a hypothetical situation like this, we would probably permit Trex, right? Then the applicant could come back with a revised site plan, right? And say, we're gonna, we're gonna do Trex instead of wood, right? And not have to do anything between, because their building permit's gonna be good for a year as their CUP would be good for a year, right?
Well, we don't have a building permit because.
Right, 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 I get it.
Yeah, that was my, my mistake, and I was.
Yeah, but you see, I guess what I'm saying is, we, we could approve the project except for you're gonna have to put a wood deck in. Then, then they can go get their building permit. That's not to say they have to do anything right away. In the meantime, we have the council, our, our joint meeting with the council. We might get better direction from the council as to how a hypothetical situation like this might be dealt with, which might then create an option for the applicant, which they do not have this evening, I guess is what I'm saying. The worst, the worst case scenario is, well, you don't have any more options after August 29th than you do right now, so you are gonna have to take it out. But on the other hand, they might get lucky and we might get lucky and the council will give us some good direction and we'll wind up with additional options, in which case they won't have to make a change. Is that, is that pretty correct on that? Okay, do, do my fellow commissioners understand then what, what the option? So the option is firstly, deny the project outright, okay? Approve the project outright, or you could continue it, although I don't see a reason to do that at this point. We could do that. Or we could approve the project with everything except for the use of the Trex material and, and require wood for the decking, right? So those, those are the options, with that last one being probably the best option because that will buy a significant amount of time for us to make a determination as to where council's gonna be.
I was just gonna recommend you could continue it to September 5th, which is when our other item had, that was.
We could do that too.
And it's right after the meeting.
We won't have any definitive.
That's actually what I was thinking, you know, we've lost sight of the fact that there are exceptions allowed to the standards. Our ordinance says that we will follow the standards. That's all it says. And, and it outlines standards, however many there are, it states them. You go into the standards and you read them, and there is the possibility of exceptions. And what I'm seeking with the continuance is to give our applicant the chance to bring forward for the public record why it's, prove to us why it's superior, why it should be allowed. And that puts us in a position for the next applicant who wants to use the same material. We have the evidence before us, we've considered it. And this is not to say that we, you know, will agree with his argument, but I'm not comfortable with denying it outright because I don't know the reasonings, reasoning, why not to replace with the same material? And that's, that's all I'm simply looking at. And, you know, you've presented, my goodness, a lot of variations on the theme. But regardless, this house that's on the National Historic Register needs to comply with the guidelines. Within the guidelines, there are allowed exceptions. We just don't have the information before us tonight to make one of those exceptions.
But what, what exceptions would be allowable?
To, to not use the same kind of material.
And on what basis? What, I mean.
That's what I want, that's what I want, the applicant to go into the interior standards and come back to us. I, I don't feel like doing the research for them.
I.
But we've talked about economic, we've mentioned fire hazard, and if you go in.
I think, I think the exceptions are, I'm sorry.
Chair Fran, if staff could answer that.
Exceptions are economic feasibility and availability of material or the feasibility of use of a material. I think those are the, those are the three exceptions. They're very precise in the guidelines. I don't think anything about fire codes or, or local.
When we say feasibility, again, that, that, the argument needs to be made, but I don't think it's our responsibility to make the argument. We need to have.
I wouldn't leave it up to the applicant to do that. I think we'll wind up with a, I, I think we would wind up with a deficient, not because of the applicant. I think we would wind up with a deficient result. I think, I think this becomes, in my view, on the 29th, what I would say, it is the obligation, is the incentive and obligation of the city to provide this information. This kind of gets back to one of the points we heard. To provide this information in concise form to people, okay, to help them to fill out their application. I don't think we can expect the, the average individual to complete this kind of analysis. We can, but, but we, we're doing this for, not, not a living, certainly, but, but we're doing this professionally, for lack, quasi-professionally, for lack of a better term. I, I would never, I, I don't, I'm not comfortable putting that burden on the end, on the applicants. I'm really not. I don't think we'll get a good result.
Well, that, that's sort of why I was insinuating that I think we should at least get through that, that joint meeting to get a little more clarification because in that meeting, we could have new priorities of our community that have emerged for us since the last time this was discussed officially in 1984. Fire hazards, changing climate, like heat, the, we've talked about this with windows, the energy efficiency. Priorities that we have now in 2023 may be incorporated into our historic preservation guidelines.
We'll also have input from the expert who's.
Right, exactly.
Can give us case studies.
Who's gonna tell us, yeah, actually.
What is, what are the tolerances?
Are they an expert or facilitator? I thought they were a facilitator.
They're an expert and a facilitator.
That's why I, I'm still in favor, and I, I kind of followed what you were saying, but I was a little bit confused about our options that you listed out or why. But my, my inclination right now, in order to, as I said, not go, no, this is an absolute no, and, you know, tear it out, I would really think that continuing it to September 5th, we can have this same exact discussion if nothing changes. But right now, we're so close to having that discussion and things could change with regards to what the priorities of the city are, are actually hashed out between the two councils and, you know, the commission and the council. And so my favor would be at least to just re-discuss this on the 5th and see if anything has changed with regards to our stated priorities in our historic districts of.
I think it continues to the 5th is too soon. And remember, if we continue it to the 5th, we have to bring it back for, for action. So I, 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 continuance, fine, let's not do the 5th. We'll, we'll, I think we're gonna need more time from after the 29th to get some sense from where council might be going with it because we may not get anything definitive enough, definitive enough to assist us with this on the 29th. So I, I would rather not do that. If we're gonna do anything, since the deck's already in, right, it's already done, the work's already done, okay? I, I would rather, I'd rather take this out almost as far as we can before. That means that the applicant's gotta take it out, they got the longest time. That gives us the longest time to get through ordinance or whatever changes, because we still have ordinance changes, right? So if, 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 if the commission is not comfortable with an outright denial or they're not comfortable with a partial approval, if they're more leaning towards a continuance, and I would say, I would say a continuance of it off calendar, and, and I'm thinking six months, we could bring it back. So that's, that's kind of where I.
And, and what was the, the impact of the fines? If we don't, if the, no building permit is, no building permit has been issued, so fines aren't starting to accumulate?
They built without a permit.
They have improvements without a building permit. They're.
I'm sorry?
Right now, they have constructed improvements of the house without a building permit. And then a triggered site plan review's gotta occur first.
Okay, so they aren't incurring any fines at this time? They're just in violation of?
Well, they're in violation.
They're in violation.
Fines, but if we're gonna continue it, we probably wouldn't apply fines until after that continuance.
There we go, okay.
May I just make a couple observations?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I appreciate the suggestion about a continuance. And I also agree with Commissioner Keen about the idea of the burden being for persuasion on the applicant. And likewise, agree with our chair that they don't have that kind of resources. It's, the information that was provided on the city's website about the regulations are correct. They're just difficult to get through, very difficult. And, you know, most people have even shorter attention span than I do. It's just not gonna be easy to get through. And when it comes to questions like trying to go back in the history of, well, was redwood used? And actually, there was a lot of redwood in this area, it came from the Sacramento Valley. I learned that from, from one project I had. So it's not so simple and it takes a lot of expertise, and I'm not sure they're gonna be able to come up with it. So while I'm sympathetic with them, I think the better practice is to continue it. We're trying to search right now for a way in which it can be done without posing a penalty on them for the delay and which it gives us time to learn a lot more about how to solve these problems in advance. Because we've heard them from two members of the public so far tonight, and we've heard them before. Commissioner Carter talked about what he's done with the Real Estate Association to get the word out. Why can't we make sure that people in Cedar Ravine and all the other districts get notices with their water bill? Have, have the property tax notices, send out a flyer that explains this thing. And there's all kinds of things we can do to make it user-friendly, to make the information user-friendly so that laypeople can quickly master what they need to master. That's why I'm moving towards the, you pick a date and I'll move for it.
Chair will make a motion to continue this item off calendar for a period not to exceed six months.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I have additional discussion on the motion, please.
I can, I would like to amend the motion with the continuance, when the applicant comes back, that they provide us more information about the selection. We don't know where we're going with this ordinance, but if things didn't change when they come back and they want their building permit, I still feel that we need the documentation, the evidence presented by the applicant for the reasoning not you, for not using the same kind of material, the, the, why it was infeasible, so that we can make a, a stronger finding when we do consider this again.
So I'm not speaking against your suggestion, Commissioner. It seems to me that that suggestion would require that the applicant understand in, in some detail the SOI, right? Let me, let me just work through my thought process. They have to understand, they have to become schooled, educated on, on the details of the SOI in order for them to then speak to the question. So to staff, is, is that something that you might be able to assist the applicant with and say, okay, here are the standards and guidelines, and here, here are the things that, that can be considered as exceptions to these guidelines, that the commission can use to make findings as to why your request can be approved that deviate from the guidelines? Is that, is that something you could do?
We, we absolutely can. We have handouts and information regarding the SOI standards. Basically, there's, there's two principal means of doing that. Either it's, you know, financially infeasible because of the cost of trying to replace, you know, same for same or in-kind or some material.
Right.
Or it's technically infeasible.
Right.
Well, is it technically infeasible to replace wood with wood on a decking? No. Is it financially infeasible to replace a wood deck with a wood deck? No.
So, see, and that's kind of where I'm going, but, but in the spirit of, of your suggestion. Your suggestion is that continuance with, with the requirement that the applicant come back to us after having met with, with, received assistance from staff.
And I don't find the, the guidelines to be that intractable. I think they are written in plain language, and so I think that if, if you own a, a property on the register, it's, it is your responsibility to become somewhat familiar with their requirements so that you can continue to realize any benefits of that association, whatever they may be. And also, it establishes the, the precedence in the, in the record that, that it is the responsibility of the property, the project applicant to bring us that evidence. I'm not comfortable with this.
This is discussion on the amendment, which I haven't seconded yet.
But, okay.
So, so I, I am, I'm accepting your friendly amendment. As long as your friendly amendment means not only will the applicant bring information, justification back that meets an exception to the standards of the Secretary of Interior standards and guidelines, but that also, that amendment also includes it with, staff is available to assist the applicant in understanding what suffices for an exception, that, that was.
And I think, I don't want to burden staff with.
Staff just said they're happy to do that. I asked that question specifically, and staff said they were happy to do that.
No, we have an applicant, he's submitted an application for site plan review, and we are, we, we assist all applicants with their applications. So it's not a question that we wouldn't assist the applicant.
So if that's the intent of the friendly amendment, I make on the motion, I accept the friendly amendment. So now we have a motion duly made and duly amended. Additional discussion on the motion? Motion is cleared to staff? Call the question, please.
Okay, staff wants to just.
Go ahead, that'd be great, thank you.
So the motion is to continue off calendar for a time not to exceed six months, to have the applicant come back with justification as to why using Trex over wood is, or wood is infeasible. Staff to assist and that the justification meets SOI standards.
I think that's, I think that's a reasonable approximation. Very good. I think you've got it. Everyone has heard the motion as amended. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Chair Fran?
Aye.
Vice Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepa?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. I hope, Mr. Donahue, you understand, you've understood the discussion and you understand the motion. And what really needs to happen now is that you need, you have a little bit of time, right? It's, it's not tomorrow, but don't delay. You need to get together with Pierre and staff and go over the Secretary of Interior standards and guidelines, which is really what's, and the city ordinance, which is really what's, what's tying our hands. I hate to use that phrase, but we, we're, our hands are somewhat tied and we have to be consistent in our application of, of ordinance. So you, you guys get together and then we're gonna have a special meeting with the city council here on the 29th at 4:00 PM, and, and you are encouraged to attend, not only welcome, but encouraged, along with the gentleman here to your, your left who spoke earlier. And this gentleman hasn't spoken, your courage to attend. And then we'll go from there, all right? I don't know if this motion's appealable. It's not appealable because we haven't taken action yet.
Yes, it's appealable.
Okay, well, all right, so if you don't like this action, sir, you can appeal it to the city council. As, as could anybody else, anybody else that doesn't like, they have 10 days to appeal this action to city council. Anybody else who doesn't like, they have 10 days to appeal this action to City Council. Hopefully, everyone will see reason in certainly what we're trying to do, and we won't have to go through that process. Go ahead, Commissioner.
The applicant very kindly invited us, said you can come take a look, et cetera. I just wanted to explain that we all look at property from a distance, but if we came on the property and talked to an applicant, then we come into ex parte communication. So, there have to be a system for all of us doing it with notice and things like that. Though it's not that we're not interested, but that's the issue.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. Is there a plan to, like, specifically distribute this to homeowners in the historic districts? Like, I will walk door-to-door, I swear to God, and like, stick these indoors if it's not happening.
Staff will be, staff will be discussing that at the, at the particular item, not, not for this. So, I'm gonna get into discussing that workshop.
Great, great. Thanks.
All right. Moving on through our packed agenda this evening. Item 11, continued items, we have none. Item 12, new business, we have none. That brings us to item nine that we moved, which 9.1. This is an educational workshop presentation by the Heritage Association of Eldredah County, proposal to the Placerville City Council. So, Pierre, Kristen, and you going to introduce this item? Do we have a representative from the Heritage Association to present?
Yes, it's, it's staff's understanding that Mr. Kirk Smith is the president of the Heritage Association, and he will be making a presentation regarding the proposal to the Placerville City Council. It was already provided to the Placerville City Council.
Okay. All right. All right. Commissioner Smith, I guess you're on.
Well, Commissioner Carter is, is the treasurer. Just to let you know some of the other people. Missy Fausel is the secretary. Her business, the hardware store, has been in town for 150 years. Mary Duffy is with the newsstand that's been on town for 100 years. That's just some of the samples of the people that are with us. You, you've got a written proposal. It gives you a chance to, to look at it, and I'll be glad to answer questions rather than go over it. Chairman Friend was there at the council meeting. The general consensus was that we need to come back with more specifics. We presented at the time with what we had available. In the proposal, it says that we've interviewed a number of consultants, and we'll finish those, and would review them with staff. And one of the persons who's available to do that is, is the finance wizard for the city, Dave Warren, who said he'd interview them. And there's a number of ways the city can come up with financing, because they don't just hand you a check. They can do it in installments, and they also do it in a system that was done way back in 1984, where it's a contract with the city, and so it's the city playing a role of, of review. There are a lot of people who wanted specifics, but we can't give you specifics until we hire the applicant, and said that the applicant would be, or the consultant would be hired in concert with the city staff. But the price would be greatly reduced in a number of different ways. The consultant is needed for, at the beginning of the project and at the end of the project. And the reason is, what we've learned is it's very complex. They have standards. For example, you look at the gingerbread and all that kind of stuff, there are specific terms that are used in the industry. And those consultants can outline for us the specific things that we have to follow. There is a form that's used for all of those who do historic resource inventories all over, and particularly in California. So, we would break it down towards, we have, the Heritage Association has assistance from the Historical Society, which has a lot of historians and a lot of wordsmiths who can do much of the work. So, one of the aspects, one of the component parts is to look at the resource inventory that was done in 1984 to 85. There were mistakes. It was incomplete. Marilyn Ferguson, who headed up the organization and headed up that survey, said that it was just a start and not meant to be complete. So, that's one of our first tasks, is going through that and making sure that we make all corrections. And in some cases, it's misidentification of property, and other instances is not fleshing it out. Saying, for example, that a house was the Skinner House doesn't tell you much, which Skinner. So, there would be a lot of narrative offered in our resource inventory. We sought to bring this up before you twice before. The staff said they wanted some guidance from us tonight. I don't know what more guidance we could get, and if there wasn't clear before that we were gonna ask you for a vote, do you want to do it or not? Because it's in the resolution that gave this body authority over what to do that had previously been given to the Historic Advisory Committee. And one of those tasks enumerated is specifically advising the city council, not staff, but the, this body advising the city council about updating an inventory. And, and that remains our responsibility. It's something we want to do. We obviously don't have the staff resources with the city. We don't have it with this body. The same association that offered to do it in 1984, 85 is available to do it now in concert with the two other historic associations. We're gonna be meeting with the Historical Society, their board of directors on Thursday. But we have the informal commitment from, from board members. That just gives you a brief overview. I don't want to go over the whole package. You've had a chance to review it. I'll be glad to answer questions, as, as Commissioner Carter will, because there's four of us that are on a task force for this project, of which he's one. Does that help you? Give a quick overview?
Yeah. Think so.
Commissioner Lepa, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just had a couple of questions. I do appreciate that an actual proposal was put together. That takes time, effort, and I do, you know, value that someone has, has started putting this together. So, thank you for that. Has a graduate, there's a lot of talk about the graduate student being a huge resource and a cost-saving. Has a graduate student been identified or even discussed with?
No.
Okay.
And, and if push comes, what we're looking for after the city council is to get other resources. The, one major association for the Preservation Council for the state advised us not to use a graduate student because of the specific standards that are involved. It would be a sharp learning curve, and it depends on the quality of the person you get, their talents, their resources, et cetera. We know they can do a lot, but the consultants we've talked to all said it's a great idea and would help to reduce their costs. We're gonna try to look at doing it with minimal costs and, and not have it as part of the funding package from the, from the city, just to avoid that obstacle.
Yeah, more, it was just in my mind, like, how far along those kinds of conversations it had. Like, do we have someone who's roaring and ready to go? Or is that just more of a, a theory that we could use? I do think it's a good idea, but I just wasn't sure how far along those conversations.
There's a specific professor at Sac State whose job is to be what I describe as a matchmaker. Her job is to work with graduate students to help them formulate their project and a thesis. So, you just turn it over to her. But the first project, task is to get the consultant. One of the estimates came, they're all over the state, so obviously, people from Pasadena are gonna give you a higher price, because they're gonna be people who have to come up here. We're looking at, at those that are in Sacramento.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. And then it talks about having a goal of starting by the end of August. Do you think that's still feasible with our, our meeting that's gonna happen?
Based on the comments of Commissioners Friend and Carter can tell you, but I think that based on the city, we need to do a lot more lobbying. We need to spell it out with greater detail to the city. So, for that purpose, we'd be pushing into September.
Okay, thank you.
I think specific to that point, when Kirk and Ryan presented to council last Tuesday, I think it was, council was pretty unanimous in feeling that, okay, we have the upcoming joint meeting, let's get past that first. But then, there, there were also a number of comments, and, and mine included that when we get down to a specific proposal, it needs to have a lot more detail in the proposals, particularly for the, the amount of money that's being requested.
And you'll get it.
Commissioner Carter, you're kind of a, a joint on, on this thing.
Sure. I don't know if we, do we want to take a public comment before we continue? There seems to be an interested party.
Well, I guess, I guess we could, sure. We'll go ahead and open it up to-
I'd like to do that if it's possible before my comment.
Could you pull the microphone closer? Thank you. Check, check, one, two?
Check, one, two?
That's good.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Weston DeWalt, and I want to address the proposal that was put forth by the association. A look at the Attorney General's Registry of Charitable Trust has revealed that in May of 2010, the registry, the registry revoked the status of the association as a charitable organization, and advised the association that it would be in violation of California law if it continued to operate or to solicit funds in the state of California. Given this, my hope is that the association, if it continues to seek city funding, will address the 2010 revocation of its status as a charitable organization, and explain how, under the circumstances, it could move forward with the proposed project. Additionally, my hope is that if the association is somehow able to move forward, that it publicly address questions that have been raised by the contents of the proposal. Specifically, one, why is it thought that the city should fund the entirety of the described project when other nonprofit organizations have brought as much as 75% or more of the necessary funding to the table for their proposed projects? Two, the propos, the proposal states, we will be working on this project in collaboration with other leading, leading historic education and preservation groups. I would ask them to address what specifically are those education and preservation groups with which the association would collaborate? Three, the proposal states that the association's team, that's the word that you use, team, assigned to the project, has reviewed 40 historic resource inventories in California, as well as some in other states. It raises the question, who specifically are the members of the association's team? They've gone unnamed. And what are their credentials? And could the association and the city rely upon them to make decisions objectively and without prejudice? And four, the proposal states that its unnamed team has reached out to a number of consultants in the historical resources field and has settled on one to employ. That person was identified. I would ask them to elaborate on what the credentials of that consultant are, and to answer the question, could the association and the city rely upon that consultant to make decisions objectively and without prejudice? To conclude, my hope is that if the city decides to hire a consultant to advise city staff in the production of a new historical resource inventory, that it look beyond the immediate community and secure the services of a credentialed, experienced individual who has done such work for other cities and who has demonstrated integrity and objectivity in the execution of their assigned responsibilities. And I will just reinforce the fact, and it is a fact, that the Attorney General's Registry of Charitable Trust has revoked, as of May 2010, the registry of the association's status as a charitable organization, and advised it directly that it would be in violation of California law if it continued to operate or to solicit funds in the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for continued discussion. This, that before, it was, this did come up at the, the council meeting, and I didn't necessarily, in fact, I think the vice mayor raised the issue, and I didn't follow in entirety what the resolution was, but I understood it was, it was in the process of being resolved. And Kirk, you might have additional information on it, but I, I'm, I'm not sure that we need to get into a lot of detail on-
I'm trying to be brief.
Use your microphone, please, sir.
You raised very good questions, and I'll start from the top. We've been a 501(c)(3) C. taxes exempt corporation for a very long time. Nobody that I can find knew of the Attorney General's status. So, it's something that our treasurer will take care of. On the question of the members of the team, as it was described, besides Ryan and myself, and I could go into my background, which spans a long period of time, in, in historic preservation, but the, in Washington DC, I worked on a number of projects. One was the Alice Pike Barney House. Ever heard of Lake Barney? Dr. Livingston, I presume? That was a studio in Washington we worked to save, worked on a number of projects like that, worked with people who start to know about brick. I mean, there was one person who could look at brick and tell you when it was made, what type it was, what an interesting conversation, that would be over dinner. But the other two persons are the two owners of the Thompson House that's on your neighbor up there on Cedar Ravine. And your colleague over here can tell you about the building. It's spectacularly maintained. Sean works for the State Museum, has extensive background on that. But those kinds of things, the curriculum vitae, will be provided the next time we bring this up. The same thing for Jacob Reilly, has worked in this field as a consultant on historic preservation for a long time. If you look at that house, it's spectacular. We'll describe that later in a different context. So, those are the things that will be provided in detail. This organization, as I've mentioned a number of times, did not meet during COVID. Most of the board members were at an age level where they were very conscious of COVID. And then, once it was over, decided, well, let's abandon and give our money to the Heritage, the Historical Society. So, it started off late, and that's why we're not in the same posture as, as you know, for the arts and culture that's been working on these grants for a long time. The one grant that's available for matching grants, like we had back in 1984, is no longer available unless we're a specific certified municipality. And as Pierre can explain to you, there's just a whole bunch of qualifications that we just can't meet. So, we are looking for other funding, and the next time we come back, we'll have answers to all of those questions with details. But believe me, it is a 501(c)(3) C. corporation. It's never been removed from taxes exempt status. The corporate status is still in place. The corporate status is still in place, and the issue of the Attorney General's notice will be cured. So when we come back, we'll have all those things that were raised explained in detail.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Those are the members that you asked about.
Sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carter, do you have comments, and then open it up to the other commissioners?
Absolutely, and I think it's important to note that, you know, this proposal was, although I'm proud of the product, it was rushed in the extreme. We had a deadline to meet for an update on ARPA funding, which is the funding that the Heritage Association was pursuing with the city. So we had to meet a deadline, and the city council gave us direction, which was very helpful and very warranted, and which was fantastic because it gave us more time, but we also got the issue in front of them, the issue being the historic inventory. And so, you know, taking this proposal kind of out of the picture, even though it is the item on the agenda, the issue of updating the historic registry, or the registry of historic places, is of utmost importance, I think, to all of us. And getting back to what Kirk was saying earlier, what Commissioner Smith was saying earlier, we'd love to get something on the agenda, not necessarily to support this proposal, because I think that would be inappropriate, but just to get a resolution that the planning commission is in support of updating the inventory of historic places in the city, just because, I mean, we use it regularly for planning. The planning department uses it to determine site plan reviews. This document is, I use the example in my presentation, that I have a two-year-old grandson, and this document was last addressed when I was in middle school. So, you know, it definitely needs to be updated. You know, this proposal was flawed. Kirk and I are willing to admit to that, but we're proud of the fact that we think that it moved the conversation forward in the city to try and get this effort to update the inventory. And I think that if we could get some agreement from you guys on the commission, that I think it would be good for us as a group to support the update, not necessarily this proposal or any group's proposal, but just the idea that the document needs to be updated and just support that effort in general, I think it would be great for us to do that. So I'll hold more comment.
Yeah, great. Actually, I think what you just described is precisely what this body would do, not assigning it to any one group or entity. I think that would be up to council's responsibility. If the council decides that it is a priority and it is of value to update the registry, then council can create a bid proposal to select a contractor, create the variables. We could probably even help provide council suggestions on what the deliverables would be, and et cetera. But then council, the city, would go through its regular contracting process, you know, solicit bids, looking for, and figure out how much money that they want to allocate. And I think that that's probably, at some point, that's what we would more than likely do, would be, you know, I don't know if it would be by resolution or some other action to the city council, but to recommend the support of that. And they also indicated they wanted to have the discussion at the end of the month and to see where it kind of goes from that. But that makes a whole lot of sense to me. Again, as I've said, since the special committee was formed, your efforts, the two of you, greatly appreciated, and you're absolutely correct, this has moved the ball forward. It's now above radar, which is exactly where we want it to be, and we'll continue to move it forward. Commissioner Keeney?
I recognize the need for us to update the historical inventory, but bringing this up in profile, you went about it in exactly the wrong way, and I watched your presentation to the city council. I read this as part of the city council's packet, and I was livid. Honestly, I just, I, this makes me mad on so many levels. There's hardly a paragraph in here that I didn't take exception with. And I'm glad to hear that the city council is possibly going to take action to have staff develop a project and put this out to bid with contractors who present their credentials. And our speaker pointed out several of the things that occurred to me. This presentation, I've got a P.O. box. There's no name associated with it. There's no list of anybody who's associated with it, except for your testimonial in public session, and so that I know that now Kirk Smith and Ryan Carter are members. And as I watched it, I just, I really think you undermined our work rather than pushing anything forward. So I don't want to belabor it. I think you know now that any credible proposal would have to have CVs, references, a timetable, a budget. You're asking for nearly $60,000, and the way it reads is that you, you know, some unnamed consultant and unnamed graduate student is going to help you create some plaques, maybe make a book, and do something with Facebook. And for $60,000, I mean, not only me, I said, I was really, excuse me, I was really frustrated with this situation, but there's the rest of the public. For that kind of money, you have to be, you have to be serious and give the public assurances that they're getting some sort of usable deliverable, and that you're responsible for it. I also had heartburn over the fact that unbeknownst to Commissioner Lepner, myself, the three of you went to city council to present this. And I don't know if that is an actual conflict of interest. I don't know if we need advice from our city attorney, but the optics, gentlemen, the optics were horrible, and especially, you caught me off guard. I am a long-serving member of this commission, and I was not able to attend the meeting. Had I known, I would have tried to be available, but I certainly would not have spoken up in favor of this particular proposal as presented. We all just finished our ethics training, and there's a statement that public officials are to avoid even the appearance of some sort of conflict. And what happened was that two members of our planning commission, obviously, you changed hats, but in our small community, it's really hard to separate that planning commissioner role versus trying to get funding for a board on which you are members. And I just, I advise you, perhaps you should speak to the city attorney about it, but I was very uncomfortable with that. I thought it was inappropriate, and I myself, you know, perhaps I could go in front of the city council more than I do, but I feel, you know, they know that I'm a planning commissioner. They appointed me, and I don't want the public to feel like I have a stronger voice than anyone else. And so I'm still very upset. When I read this again, I kind of relive that presentation and how frustrated I was that I was caught off guard. You know, as you pointed out, it's, the inventory is something that we need, but, you know, honestly, what you presented doesn't even address how the inventory would really be updated. There are other details, and I'm not sure, if you're proposing that, you need to give justifications for why, and justifications for spending $60,000 of our money. And, you know, in some respects, $60,000 is not a lot. You know, when you look at our city budget, it's not a lot of money. We have a big budget. Personally, to me, that's a lot of money. I think to staff members who do without, that's a lot of money. That could go to a lot of other projects in our city that need to be taken care of, need to be addressed, and the public needs to know that the problem's being taken care of. And so I think that you've gotten the message before tonight, hearing from me. I think city council probably gave you much better directions and much clearer direction on where this needs to go. And while I do support the idea of updating inventory, I, at this point, I really don't want to speak in favor or against it, because what's out there right now needs to cool off, and, you know, maybe in as soon as a month or six weeks, it's something, a topic that we can bring up again. But I guess I'll just close with asking that we all keep each other informed. This is something that definitely, you know, affects our work, but I hate to be caught flat-footed. And so I, anyway, I hope you take everyone's words seriously, and if you do come before city council again, that you have a much clearer and much better product for them to consider.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think the challenge or the confusion, as you've illustrated in your very definitive comments, is unclear as to who Mr. Carter and Mr. Smith were representing. They were not there as planning commission, right? And in fact, as the chair, I was notified that this item was on the agenda, so I attended as the chair of this body to speak in favor of support of updating the historic registry, right? And I think I was clear in my comments and public comments, as you heard them, I'm sure, that there was a lot lacking in the proposal, including accountability and deliverables and so on and so forth. And then, and even for, it really didn't hit me again until this evening, a proposal such as this is not something this body would be doing anyway. We would not be reviewing and approving a proposal to go to council. What we would do would be to recommend to council, and I strongly would advocate for that recommendation. What happened last week doesn't change that the need is still there, that the historic registry be updated, okay? That needs to happen. Now, how council wants to prioritize that, and how they want to fund it, and how much money, and how they want to go about it, that's a different consideration, but it absolutely has got to go through the city's contracting, you know, bid proposal process. I would certainly hope that despite your response, your visceral response, understandable visceral response, that, you know, you would not be opposed to advancing revising the historic registry for future use, because we do need it. That's true. Two things can be true at the same time. This should not have gone to council, or, well, it could have gone to council, but it's a little bit fuzzy, and I'm going to speak to that again in a moment. That's true. That wasn't the best process, but the registry needs to be updated. That's also true. So two things can be true at the exact same time. Now, having said that, you do raise, and we might as well be completely transparent, you raise a very, very good point, and I'm going to ask both Commissioner Carter and Commissioner Smith to state this evening for the record, your, restate if you've already stated it, your association relative to the Heritage Association, if you have one. I'll start with you, Commissioner Carter.
I am currently the treasurer of that organization.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith? Your relationship with the Heritage Association?
President.
The microphone, please. It's being recorded, sir.
President.
So you're president of the association. So I have to acknowledge Commissioner Keeney's concern, because until last Tuesday, I was not aware, or if I was, it was over my head. So that creates a real problem for us, to the extent, frankly, and we'll have to get an opinion on this, Pierre, probably from city attorney. I'm not even sure that the two of you could even vote. You could vote on a proposal, I think, a resolution to support updating the historic inventory. That's within the purview of this body. We certainly could not vote on anything that would identify the Heritage Association or any group that any of us here would be affiliated with. That would be an absolute clear conflict of interest. So as long as we're clear on that, and again, I think the most that this body would ever do would be a resolution at some point. So there's no real urgency on that. We have the meeting with council. Council made it very clear that they support the concept in general. They raised some of the same concerns I had when I read the proposal, but they clearly want to wait, and I think, I don't think there's any fatal harm done here, frankly, and that's not to take away from your impression, not to speak against that at all, but on balance, I don't think that we are, we're in jeopardy of any sort in our credibility as a body. I think we work very hard to be diligent in how we operate. So.
Can I just add that I have great respect, one of the things I can tell you, having been on both sides of this dais, is I have great respect for this body, something I really appreciate. Everybody on this commission listens to each other carefully, openly, with respect, and we work towards a combination whenever possible. It is a position of Commissioner Carter and I that we would not be, as a subcommittee, usurping the rest of you. We wholeheartedly are opposed to that notion. We wanted you at every stage to be involved in these discussions. It happened to be that although, and it's understandable, as the two newest members, that we'd be, there'd be some suspicion or suspect and caution. That's understandable. But we wanted at each stage for all of our colleagues to be involved, because we don't represent you, all five of you. We want to hear from all of you. And the one session that was supposed to have been for this kind of vote, where you could say yes, no, or let's postpone it, et cetera, wasn't on the calendar as we understood it would be, and it happened to be one when you weren't present. And we sought to make sure that Commissioner Friend was advised of those meetings. As far as the timing, I agree with everything you said and with everything DeWalt said, everything. But please understand, the budget process didn't have anything to do with us. We didn't set up the budget process. It started in the spring, and by the time we were able to go in there to ask for money, was very late in the process. When Dave Warren called me about a need for this proposal, put something, do you think that's the kind of work product I want to do? No, but it's the timing that we were subjected to. So I'm pleased that we can come back later. The understanding was, that was our chance to get the money. As far as the amount of money, if you look at what the city, what the package was in 2015, adjusted for 2018, 1985, to now, adjusted for inflation, it was about $30,000. We're looking at ways that we can cut the cost and get.
Commissioner Smith, I'm going to cut you off there, because I think what's really lost in that point is Commissioner Keeney's observation, and it's a correct one, that you are a member of the city planning commission, and you cannot, you cannot go and represent yourself also as the president of the Heritage Association on something that really technically is within the peripheral purview of this body.
I don't think I said anything, I don't think I ever.
Let me elaborate on that, please.
Please.
And I really don't, I don't want to go too deep, because I, I think, I think the points are well-made.
However, the optics, and I just need to underscore to everyone, I've been, I've heard the comments about the quote-unquote "old boys' network," and how the same people are always in charge of everything, and so that's why change doesn't, or things don't happen the way a citizen wants. And I don't know if you've heard those complaints, but I've heard them aplenty. And also, what you were standing to do, as, so even taking off your planning commissioner hat and putting on your Heritage Association hat, you're still a planning commissioner, and it's money going to your organization, and that is indirect conflict. Okay, you're not a decision-maker, still, you're very influential, and I just say, I said optics before, but it just, you know, it doesn't pass the straight face test in our small community. You have to recognize, people know who you are, the audience, you know, the city council may be able to compartment. You know, the City Council may be able to compartmentalize it, we may be able to compartmentalize it, but that doesn't mean the general public can. And so I, I think, Daniel, perhaps we should all refresh our study of the ethics, the conflict of interest rules, so that we no longer, we never put ourselves, put our City Council, put our Planning Commission in that uncomfortable situation.
All right. I think that that is a good final point on this topic. So I think after the 29th.
If I might just, yeah, just to say that I, all of this has been news to me. I'm not using the baby excuse, but I'm exhausted at raising a very small baby, and so, you know, I'm not as involved as I was in the past and as I would truly love to be. A lot of this is really interesting and speaks to some of the hesitations or reservations I've had historically around this topic, particularly even down to the subcommittee that was created. I didn't like the fact that two of the members on the subcommittee voted to affirm the subcommittee and were brand-new members. That give them, in my opinion, a level of power or authority that I think may have been managed differently around this topic, particularly when we have a meeting with the City Council with the five of us coming up. So this is all very interesting. It's frankly a little bit, I will agree with Chris's read on it, that I think that there's a lot of conflict going on, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes. I'm not on Facebook looking at what people are saying. I don't follow that way. So as a member, basically, of the public and a Planning Commissioner, I don't like the idea of all of this intermixing and things, particularly with not being very forward prior to right now. Had no clue that you guys were, you know, in charge on here. Had no clue. I basically knew, I knew you were involved with it because of the graduate student stuff. I kind of figured that there was some sort, because I know you're a big advocate of that, but didn't know any of this. So, interesting.
For the record, it did go to Council without approval of this body. I was notified after it was already on the agenda, and I even commented in writing to Commissioner Smith that my preference would be for it to be pulled off. So.
When I read it, I thought it was a very high-level, loose proposal. I had no clue that it was presented in the way that it is.
Again, but it wasn't, it wasn't presented as being, you know, the Planning Commission has done anything with this. In fact, I made it clear to Council, Planning Commission has not seen this. We have had discussion, I support the work that Ryan and Kirk are doing. I think that their work is valuable, and they bring interest from their outside affiliations that frankly are helpful to us. And I think getting the registry done is important, okay? This was very clumsy. I don't think it was nefarious by intent, it was nefarious by naivete, okay? And I was in public service for many decades, and my earlier public service was not a reflection of my later public service, and I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. So I think the message is heard loud and clear, and I think Pierre will work getting some direction from City Council or a City Attorney, and will work with the two Commissioners on this. And I think everyone's clear on how this has to work, and I just want to make sure that the continued work of you two gentlemen continues and you do what you have done so far, and that is to come back and report to us that our meeting is on what you've done and who you've met with. I will reemphasize, if either of you are planning to meet with any bodies, as the Chair, I do want to know. And I've already, at least I've said that to you, I don't know if I told that to you, Kirk. Yeah, as the Chair, I do want to know you're going to go meet with the body. And I always reserve the right to attend as the Chair, and I will represent the Planning Commission as Chairman of the Planning Commission. But you do have the authority, as you indicated, operating under the auspices of this body as a special committee on this very specific topic, okay? And you'll stay confined to that topic, okay? And operate within the rules of integrity, as I know that you both will. Okay? All right. That brings us to items of Commissioner and staff. Pierre, Kristen, I'll turn it over to you. 13-1, staff reports.
So I just wanted to talk briefly with the Planning Commission about our joint workshop that's scheduled for August 29th. That's going to be 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM here in Town Hall. And the reason why I want to emphasize that this is a workshop for the benefit of the Planning Commission and the City Council. And so, yes, the public is invited to attend, and there probably will be, well, I'm sure there will be some opportunity for the public to give comment, but I do want to emphasize, it's not a public workshop, it's a joint City Council/Planning Commission workshop. So this is the opportunity for Planning Commissioners, Council members that have a lot of concerns regarding our current process when we review historic buildings within our historic districts and the application of the Secretary of Interior standards. That is what this is about. And so there's two hours set aside, and so we hired a professional consultant. These are experts in historic preservation, they're certified in the whole nine yards, and they will be facilitating the meeting to garner a very good discussion between the Planning Commissioners and the Council members. That's the primary purpose of this. You know, the public is invited to attend, observe, maybe at the end answer, you know, ask some questions if there's time available. But that's what I want to emphasize. And so we're not going door-to-door and giving this, you know, to each homeowner that happens to be within a historic district, and that's the reason why we wouldn't be doing it. It's not a workshop for the public. So say, for example, when we held a public workshop on the private sewer laterals, that wasn't a Planning Commission/Council workshop. That was a public workshop where we invited the public, we actually, you know, sent invitations to anybody and everybody we knew that was on a private sewer lateral, and that's what that whole workshop was about. And I want to emphasize that, it's a little bit different. So I encourage all of you to formulate questions, write them down, have something there so that you can check your boxes, so that you're getting those questions answered from the consultant, and then you have that dialogue with the Council members. So I really wanted to emphasize the importance of this workshop is for you and the City Council. Public is welcome, it'd be a public forum, but, you know, we're really hoping staff wants to see some clear direction from you and from the Council where we move forward, because in my tenure here now, for the last 10 years as staff, we're all over the map, and we need to be more definitive on what we want to do. What does a city want to do with projects that are within, you know, that are going to affect these buildings and historic districts?
Thank you. Okay, and so we have the meeting on the 29th, then, Kristen?
And then we have a Planning Commission meeting on the 5th of September.
We do on September 5th? That's as far out as you go, right now?
Currently, yes.
Okay, great. So 9:00, 5:00. Okay, and that's right after the holiday, too, correct?
Yes, it's the day right after, and the week right after the joint meeting.
Yes, fantastic. All right. Anything else from staff?
Don't believe so.
Okay, super. Any matters, well, let's see, 13-2, Planning Commission matters. Do we have any additional reporting out from the special committee?
My first one on the last subject, just to ask you, can you tell us, who is the person? You told us that they're qualified, just like before, for an inventory. Who, what is the curriculum vitae? Could we have that kind of information?
Certainly, we can provide that for you. We went to the NCIC and we cold-called.
NCIC?
Yes, from Sac State. And so that's how we researched individuals to contact, possibly be consultants. We completed an interview, we received a proposal, which we're more than happy to provide to you upon request.
What was the name of the organization? Those initials stand for?
I'm not sure what they stand for. It's E-Corp.
Okay.
E-C-O-R-P.
Okay. All right. I take your word for it.
In consonance with not being blindsided, Commissioner Carter and I asked about those kinds of things several weeks ago. It's important for us to know, because the responsibility ultimately for giving advice to the City Council, according to one resolution, rests with us. And we're told that this person's going to be, and we don't even know the person yet, is going to be an expert. There are a lot of experts out there. We don't know how they were selected, we don't know anything about them, and that'd be helpful if we knew, long before, as soon as possible. Weeks ago would have helped.
Well, it's all public record, we can certainly provide that to you. But again, we're at the direction of the City Council. I think, Commissioner, I think that really Council's determination on that, you can get the information from staff, though.
No, it's all public record. We're certainly happy to provide that information to Commissioner Smith or anybody else.
It's not on the website, though, I mean, is.
No.
Yeah, it's public record.
If we don't put it on the website.
Yeah, public information, we'd be happy to share it.
And at the last meeting, staff did tell you who the consultant was, that was the question that was asked. So if there's more information you'd like, we can certainly provide that.
Yeah, good.
I just have one question, going back to this. As I'm looking at it now and thinking about what Pierre said about it not being a public input session, which I totally agree with and don't want to focus on, because I think that can get caught up in whether we should, like, have them or not, what, people get very into the homeowner rights discussion, and I think really we want to focus on our priorities here, which then, as I look at this, it kind of strikes me as not being detailed enough to let people know why they would want to attend this. Like, it kind of strikes me, as I'm looking at it now, as, like, if you have an interest in historic preservation, maybe you want to check out this workshop versus we are going to be discussing the rules and regulations around the neighborhood that you live in and that directly impacts what you can and can't do to your home. And I think, just having a friend of mine who lives in the historic district, didn't know she lived in the historic district, I talk about, or, not talk about it all the time, but I mean, like, we talk about the historic district stuff that I talk about here, just casually as friends, and I update her on things, because it does directly impact what she can do to her house. They haven't done their sighting, because she now is aware that that is an issue. And so I actually think it is kind of a missed opportunity to engage the homeowners of these districts around this joint session and let them know that where they live, like, if Pacific Street where I live was being discussed, I'd want to know that it's Pacific Street being discussed, not just we're discussing some streets in Placerville. I would be much more invested. So just, just some feedback, if it's not feasible or not, you know, something that can be done, I get it, but I do see it as a missed opportunity to engage with our homeowners and have them become aware of what our discussions are.
I think the big takeaway is, this is a discussion of the Secretary of Interior Standards and how we implement them. Not necessarily a specific discussion on the historic districts or a specific historic district or a specific project.
Yes.
We can certainly look to amend the flyer, if you have recommendations, we're open to that.
Yeah, and I totally agree with you. I don't think it's, I'm not trying to even point it towards that direction, I just see it as an opportunity to engage people on what we evaluate the historic districts by, so that it's not just some kind of fluffy thing in the sky of what we're making the decisions we are, but they're actually able to hear. You know, we're never going to get another chance to have all of the homeowners who are impacted by this to be aware or come to a meeting where they're going to get some sort of high-level information on what we evaluate by. That's just my feedback. Like I said, I just see it as a potential missed opportunity to start really telling people, hey, you are in a historic district, and hey, we do have standards, and hey, these are the standards that we're going by, and here's our discussion about it locally. Like I said, just my feedback, I'm viewing it in that way, so, but.
No, and I understand that, but again, we were proceeding under direction of the City Council, and the City Council felt that they wanted to be educated, and they were requesting a joint workshop. So it's a joint workshop for the decision-makers. If anything comes out of it, we get direction from the City Council, well, then we get more into the public arena, where if we're going to make changes to the Secretary of Interior standards or to our code on how we address or what process we'll go through, is it going to be a site plan review under current, are we going to change that? That's going to come to you, and then we're going to have public hearings and maybe a public workshop on that. But then the public will be fully engaged on that. So I don't think this was ever meant to be, I mean, maybe, maybe I'm all mistaken, but my understanding of the direction I thought I received from the City Council was to have this joint workshop between the two bodies who are making the decisions, and that later, I'm sure if there's any changes or any direction we get from Council on our code or processes, that's going to go through a whole public review process, through you and then back to the City Council. Ample opportunity for the public.
Totally agree and totally understand what you're saying. I was just saying that I could see it as an additional benefit or byproduct of the meeting could be homeowner, you know, awareness. That's all. Not that, I completely agree with you of the purpose and the reasoning behind and the goals of the workshop, that's very clear. Mine was just that an additional byproduct of the meeting could be some homeowner engagement. That's all, yeah.
But if not homeowner engagement, a benefit to the homeowners and on that, along that vein, Pierre, perhaps talk with Cleve and see if we would want to have a reporter from the Mountain Democrat here, and if not, for a report from that meeting itself, but perhaps to do an article or maybe a series of articles on the historic district and all the things we've been talking about, to provide information to folks, right? Because I think, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of things people need to know, and it gets to how do we get them to know it? And the newspapers is but one medium. I still believe the paper's relevant. And so just maybe throw that idea out to him and see what he thinks, because I think the exposure would probably be good. Commissioner Smith, I want to go back since we're under Planning Commissioner matters. You had brought this forth earlier, is there something you wanted to add or discuss on this that had to do with the windows?
Down to.
I have one already down here, and I'm sure the, do you have one, Commissioner Lepers?
No, I can look at this one.
All right.
Here's what we wanted to let you know. The subject of vinyl windows keeps coming up over and over and over. It's a misnomer, because we're really talking about double-pane windows, insulated windows. And vinyl windows are often pushed by contractors, because it's where there's a higher profit margin. It doesn't require a lot of sophisticated labor, and it's available all over the place. So what I've done is just a sample of some of the information that's out there and what we were going to offer. If you guys want to all do it yourselves, you can. Try to get an association, one of the historical associations, to do the labor, so that the staff could have, something they could have on the website, so that when people come here and ask about those questions, they get information. So what I've done is talked to people at Home Depot, because they represent about five different companies. We don't want to hear from the five different companies. We wanted a trade association that represents all of them, to describe all the different options out there. And one of the most exciting ones that we recently learned of from the owners of the Thompson House, Judge Thompson House, is that's on the front page. That's called Inwo, and what those do is they allow you to insulate your windows, historic windows, without, at a much lower cost, because it's flexible glass material that goes on the inside. So if you look at Judge Thompson's house, it's been beautifully restored, they were more accurately preserved, the windows are from the 1850s, they are hand-blown glass, ripples, the bubbles, all that is there. Can you imagine trying to replace that with vinyl or something else? So you don't have to. What they did is they came up with these inserts that go inside, it is cheaper than any other kind of window out there for double-pane windows. It allows you to open and close your windows as you normally would, and it allows you to keep the original glass. So for a lot of historic homes in town, that's one of the options that's available. I didn't know about it until I heard about it from Sean and Jacob about their house just a few weeks ago. So what we would like to do, not a conflict of interest, I'm not getting money, volunteer at the time, but we would get a package together, or you could just ask the staff to do it, I don't know, they're kind of overextended now, but to come up with a package of material that'd be a. that would be available to applicants when they come in, so they know what their options are. And when it comes to historic windows, you don't have to say vinyl, and it doesn't even have to be wood clad with vinyl. The second page is Anderson, and that's just a popular name. There are zillions of different kinds of windows, okay, that are made of wood. I'm exaggerating, there may be just 1,000. And the next page shows you doors, but that just gives you a sample of the kind of windows that you've seen around town that are historic. And those are available, double-pane window that were wood-framed, not wood clad with vinyl, but wood-framed. So if an applicant comes in here and knows what their options are, it might be a little different. We'll have to cure the problem of making sure they know about code requirements and things like that, but at least those resources would be there. And so that's one of the things that we need to put out there. I think another difficulty that I keep hearing from applicants after the fact is how difficult it is to understand the information. So what Andrew Painter put on that website is accurate. It's good, but an executive summary, some kind of professional could come in and provide a guide to get through that material easily, because it's complicated. I mean, that's what folks tell me. It's complicated. We heard it tonight. People say they wanted to find out and didn't know this and didn't know that. There are steps we can do to make sure, whatever the standards are in the future, and I'm not as optimistic as you are about these standards being kept, the city's under intense lobbying from developers who want to get rid of the standards. So I'm not optimistic about the 29th, but we'll see. This just tells you this is one option for how to address the problem, is make sure we help the public understand the presence of the guidelines. It could be by, as the city's done on a number of other occasions with water bills, or it can be having it go with inserts that goes for the tax bill for properties. But if that's out there, then people get a chance to know that in advance and get the information in a usable way that's user-friendly and not so technical, because right now it's technical. So those are some of the steps we think we could take.
Thank you. If there's no other business, the chair will call for adjournment at 9:15.
9:12.
9:12. That clock's fast. Thank you. We'll see you all on the 29th.
Thank you.